The Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask Councilmember Angie Reyes English to do the invocation. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Patterson. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. If you could please bow your heads. Thank you, Father, for continued blessings. Thank you for your continued watching over the city and our people here in the city of Hawthorne. Our residents may continue to bless them, keep them. Bless those less fortunate. May you continue to just give us good ears, good tongues to be able to speak on you, Father, and we say this on your name. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody stand up, face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Right. Welcome, everybody. This is the first meeting of, of what, the year 2021. Hopefully, it ends up being a better ones compared to last year. So very happy that everybody's here. Hope you guys had a good holidays. I had a relaxing one, so it was, it was pretty cool. So, uh, so let's get started. Uh, the today's meeting, let's take a look. Today's meeting seems to not be a long one. So I think, uh, if we can kind of streamline most of these things, that would be great. Um, one question that I do ask is, uh, Mr. City Clerk. Did you provide us with the existing members of these organizations? That we're going to be, uh, assigning people to?
I believe not, but I can get those to you now if you'd like.
Yeah, it would be good just to see who's on those because there's some that we want to stay on and, you know, I mean, there's like a long list and we like to have those.
Okay, we'll get to this chair. Uh, that, the current, um, board members and alternates for all of those committees are in the agenda bill in the package.
Oh, they are? Okay, no, 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 no. What, what number is that again? What number is the agenda bill? It doesn't say here.
It is number... Thirty-four.
Thirty-four?
And it's actually in the, the text of the three-page agenda bill.
Right? Okay, I just want everybody just to know that, just so that you, we could just base our, base whatever we do right off of that, okay? Does that sound good? All right. All right, go ahead, uh, Mayor Protem, Alex Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, I have a presentation. Uh, this is a good partnership between the Hawthorne School District and the New Star Family Justice Center. That for these past three years, they've been doing, you know, a bullying prevention program. And we have some winners tonight that I'm going to ask Dr. Sonia Smith and, um, Ms. Elena to present the, with the PowerPoint presentation. I don't know Eric has it, so welcome, Dr. Smith, and welcome, Elena.
Thank you very much. Mayor Vargas, council members, invited guests and community members, so I want to thank you for allowing me to present tonight on an amazing partnership and some very talented students from the Hawthorne School District. As, um, Mayor Protem Montero mentioned, we are in the third year of our partnership. And Ms. Elena Maloney approached me, uh, three years ago and asked that we would engage in this partnership. And it was the same year we had implemented a anti-bullying program. And this year's contest was extremely challenging because of the virtual learning, but we were able to make it happen. So, Mr. Chavez, if you don't mind starting the presentation. Thank you very much. So, Amna Siddique from New Star Family Justice Center created a beautiful flyer. This is just a snippet of it. And the site deans of the middle schools were responsible for getting the word out and getting those entries in and judging at the site. So, New Star Family Justice Center helped out by delivering art kits to all interested participants. And then we had a panel of judges from the Department of Children and Family Services and Hawthorne Police Department who decided our district winners, and I do not envy their job at all. So, next slide, please. So, the contest featured two different types of art, not only visual art, but spoken word and/or poetry. And the first place winners received $50 gift cards from New Star Family Justice Center, and the second place winners received $25 gift cards. So, our first place sixth grade student came from Hawthorne Middle School, Eliana Hernandez. And you can see here from her graphics, she says, "I would rather be a little nobody than be an evil somebody." Words scar, rumors destroy, bullies kill. And the last sentiment was something that was repeated over and over when we held our award ceremony. We allowed the students to speak. She says, "My pain may be the reason for somebody's laugh, but my laugh must never be the reason for somebody's pain." And over and over, the students talked about how either they themselves had been bullied or they had seen somebody being bullied and how that impacted them and their reasoning for wanting to, um, enter this contest. Next slide, please. Our sixth grade second place winner is Love Williams from Bud Carson Middle School. And what Love really wanted to impart is that there are consequences regardless of whether you're the bully or the bullied. Sometimes people bully others for, in a variety of ways, for a variety of reasons. And oftentimes, they, the person who is bullied will turn around and bully somebody else. Next slide, please. For seventh grade, our first place visual art winner was Dinesha Harris from Hawthorne Middle School. And you can see clearly some of the tragic effects that bullying can lead to. And the yield signs really speak to the fact that there are warning signs with bullying. And we have to keep our eyes and ears open and really be willing to stand up. And some of the sentiments in this young lady's tears are being called ugly and not good enough. Next slide, please. Our second place winner in seventh grade is Jace Coats. And when he describes this piece, he says that when someone is being bullied, their mind is cluttered. They cannot think straight. And I received an email from Jace's mom not too long ago, and she says that she was really thankful that her son participated because he himself was once bullied by someone. Next slide. Eighth grade first place winner is Melanie Canizales, also from Hawthorne Middle School. And Melanie's description of this is her artwork represents a girl crying on her bed, going over everyone's hurtful comments said behind her back and directly to her. She says she got inspiration from, from this because you never know how saying mean comments or jokes to someone affects them at the end of the day. Next slide, please. And our second place winner from eighth grade is Atsuri Chavez from Prairie Vista Middle School. Beautiful watercolor. In case you can't read it, they say, "We got this. I'll help you. It's going to be okay." And again, that selfless attitude that all of these students embody. Next slide, please. For the spoken word and poetry winners, we actually have some audio attached to them. So, when we announce the winners, if, Eric, you could play the audio. Next slide. For sixth grade, our first place winner was Juan Pablo Luna. What was really unique this year is that we had no option but to have the students either take pictures of their work or send us these audio files. So, very impactful to hear from them. And Juan Pablo added that this experience has made him realize that he has to try new things and that he will encourage others to do so. Next slide, please. Powerful words from Ariana Perez Lozano from Hawthorne Middle School. Next slide, please.
We need to stop bullying. It's really not okay. You're hurting people's feelings and taking their lives away. We need to be a kind person and help the ones in need and never be a bully who is hurtful and mean. Bullying doesn't make you cool, so just quit it and help the ones who actually go through it. So, we need to stop bullying. It's a disgrace to our world. So, let's take a stand for no bullying in this world.
That's from Samantha Galván from Prairie Vista Middle School. She was the first place winner in seventh grade. And she added she was inspired to enter the contest because she is against the act of bullying. I think all kids should be happy and able to enjoy their childhood without worrying about what another child may say or do to them. So many bad things can happen as a result of bullying, and I am totally against it. Next slide, please.
Why I Don't Bully by Abdul Munib. I don't bully. It destroys life. It makes people cry. It makes them stop trying. They try to end their life. Don't bully. You don't want to cry and try to end it all. If you want to end it all, get up, stand up, and if you can't stop, get some help.
And that was Abdul Munib from Hawthorne Middle School, our seventh grade second place winner. Next slide, please. Okay. And if you can end the presentation, Eric. Thank you. So I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to present this year's district winners. And I want to thank New Star Family Justice Center Coordinator, Amna Siddique. Also want to thank our Superintendent, Dr. Helenie Morgan, for allowing us to continue this important tradition in spite of the pandemic. And I would, um, most of all like to thank Eli, um, Elena Maloney, the Director of New Star Family Justice Center, and turn it over to her for closing remarks.
Hey, Dr. Smith, I don't see Elena's name on, on the screen.
Not seeing her? Okay, she might have had some technological issues. Elena's message was that New Star Family Justice Center is right on Hawthorne Boulevard. And the importance of the anti-bullying contest to them is that they focus on curbing domestic violence and helping victims of domestic violence. So, she wants to start in the schools because that's where we can make the greatest change. And I think you can hear from our students and see from their artwork that, um, we are definitely making a difference with, with this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, to the chair.
There.
Okay, uh, Dr. Smith, I have, uh, certificates from the city to give hold to the students, so I will drop them at the Hawthorne School District. But again, we want to thank you and Doc, uh, you, uh, Dr. Morgan and Elena Maloney for continuing this partnership. Uh, because as we see, uh, last week, you know, bullying is still alive, especially in Washington DC, in our own government. Um, so these kids are model for the future and also currently what's going on. So, we need to be vigilant because we know bullying is not just physical, but also is done through the internet, social media. So, thank you for keeping, reminding us that bully, there is no place in this world, especially in the schools. So, I appreciate all the effort that you and the New Star Justice is doing because it's a great work and we appreciate it very much. So, thank you and God bless.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Yes, um, good evening, Ms. Smith. Thank you for that presentation. Um, I would like to congratulate, um, uh, Dr. Elena Maloney for the wonderful work that New Star Family Justice Center does. And just highlight, um, the other work that you all do, uh, in domestic violence, which is really important. And, um, she's been a partner with the city of Hawthorne for quite a while, a few years now. And, uh, we're very proud to have this great resource in our city, um, to, uh, fight against domestic violence. And the, the anti-bullying art program is a great example of one of the things that the, uh, the center, uh, sponsors. Because you want to reach the children at an early age so that they learn how to communicate with each other, um, in a, in a productive manner and not through, not through bullying. So, please thank her, thank Dr. Helen Morgan for her participation in this program. It's very important for our, um, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to ask Councilmember Valentine. To, uh, you have a presentation?
Um, South Bay Fiber Network?
Yeah, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Dagel.
Good evening for having me.
So, I'm so proud of the South Bay Fiber Network, which was coordinated by the, um, uh, Southern California Council of Governments. And it was made possible through a collaborative partnership with our fifteen South Bay cities, local and state legislators, partner agencies, and construction contractors. Its core ring, a one-hundred-mile stretch of fiber optic cable, will provide our local city halls and parker agencies access to high-speed, low-cost broadband connectivity. So, as we commence 2021, I would like to, um, ask Mr. David Dagel to speak to us this evening. Thank you so much for being here and thank you so much for the South Bay Fiber Network.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be invited to this, uh, August forum. And after listening to that last presentation, it, it sort of drove home one of the core elements of why the South Bay Fiber Network exists, and that's to improve communication. And those were stark and meaningful words that I was able to listen to. So, thank you for allowing me the chance to sit in on that. Uh, for the, the council members, the mayor, Mayor Protem, and city staff, my name is David Dagel. I am the CEO and founder of a company called American Dark Fiber. It's been my distinct pleasure to serve at the will of the South Bay City's Council of Government and its membership to effectuate the vision that they had dating back three to four years now in bringing more broadband to the South Bay region. And Eric, if you would, could you start my presentation? I think I'll jump right in, so I know you folks have a, a lot of important business to do. Uh, could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. The core message for just about all cities, uh, across this great country of ours is that they have a role to play in the development of better communications, better information. And that is, cities provide the core aggregation point for not just telecommunications service providers, not just the constituents that use these services, but all elements of industry that create useful services that can be found at data centers and elsewhere so that more digital capacity can be driven deeper into communities to help create digital literacy, create economic development, and really help improve the healthcare and educational opportunities in your communities and just about every community across this great country. In order for that to happen, there has to be an alignment of interests and a community of interest to really get their arms around how to make these type of results happen. And with, uh, your involvement as one of the key members of the South Bay City's Council of Governments, the, the COG itself, uh, put forth an RFP a few years ago, back in 2018. It has now resulted in, uh, what Councilmember Valentine just described, was a hundred-mile network in the South Bay. Would you go to the next slide, please? As far as who we are, American Dark Fiber is what's called a full-facility CLEC. We're a competitive local exchange carrier. We develop fiber optics in California and a few other states. Uh, we're what's considered a telecom utility. The state of California has provided us a license so that we can develop network in the public right of way. Uh, we work with cities, we work with carriers, we work with government agencies. And in this particular case, with the South Bay Fiber Network, we brought some partners in. An entity called HP Communications, who is a telecom, uh, construction company, and Race Communications, which also has significant facilities in Los Angeles, who provides the lit services. American Dark Fiber, we, we specialize in what's called dark fiber developments. We put in the raw infrastructure that allows a whole myriad of services to be made available to the user base, whether they be residential users, commercial users, or government users. And what we did was pull a consortium together that said, "Look, we need to get the right entities doing the right things to create the most cost-effective network in the South Bay that not only addresses capacity needs today, but can scale and grow very much well into the future and allow cities, whether it's Hawthorne or any of your other, uh, member cities or anchor institutions or quasi-government agencies in the region, to plug into this network so that they can receive cost-effective bandwidth in a manner that they just can't get today." As far as our history, I've got over thirty years' experience in my team, uh, in developing fiber optic networks here in the state of California. I helped start a myriad of companies, uh, probably one of the most notable is an entity called Cogent Communications, which is one of the world's largest internet backbone companies. And I was the guy that put their network together in twenty-two different markets around, uh, the United States. So, we've got a lot of history here in California, and specifically here in Southern California. We're based in Los Angeles. And, uh, we've deployed thousands of miles, uh, of fiber here in the, uh, Southern California region. Next slide, please. When the bid came out from the COG about delivering broadband to the region, there had to be a compelling "Why do this?" And for us, the, the mission is very simple. It was to develop more fiber so that we could create more bandwidth that could be delivered to more people, providing more services much deeper into each and every community in the region. And that's what the South Bay Fiber Net, Network will do, not just for the region, but specifically for you and Hawthorne. Uh, next slide, please. So, where is the, uh, the South Bay Fiber Network? Well, as you can see, the light blue lines on the map show the actual South Bay Fiber Network. It sort of meanders throughout the South Bay, and, uh, we've got many, many more legs that we could plug into this. But as far as the contract goes, this is what the end result looks like. Uh, it's, it's, yes, we call it a ring. It may not look like one, but really what it allows is if there's a cut in any part of this network, the network survives because the bandwidth traverses in two different directions. So, if there's a cut on the east side of the ring, that all the network gear allows that bandwidth to flow to westerly and, uh, arrive at all the locations that are connected to the South Bay Fiber Network. And as you, you can see on this particular map, we've tried to highlight the city of Hawthorne so you can get a good idea of where it sits regarding your city. Uh, next slide, please. This is a Zoom view of how that routing that I just showed you plays out in your city. Uh, as you can see, it, it touches not every corner, but goes, uh, you know, meanders throughout your city in, in a pretty widespread way. On E, if you take a closer look at this map, you'll see two distinct endpoints that I think are worthy of note for you to understand. On the far left of the screen, you'll see a, uh, a green arrow pointing down that says SBFN Hub One. That's the Equinix Data Center in El Segundo. Uh, it's called LA Four. Data centers, uh, for those of you that aren't familiar, are really what the central offices of today and into the future are. This is where service applications, carrier connectivity, that allows you to connect throughout the globe exist. And Equinix is one of the world's largest operators' data centers. There are more services, cloud-based applications, and connectivity capabilities that exist inside these data centers to allow users who are connected to them to not only realize wholesale price points, but to be able to gain access in very cost-effective ways to the myriad of services that you, in this case, a city, may want to use. And I'll get into that a little later. If you look to the far right side of the, uh, city boundaries, you'll see another arrow where it says SBFN Hub Two. That is the Evoque Data Center. That used to be the AT&amp;T IDC Center, uh, located at 2301 120th Street. That's also a major data center. And the same thing that I described for the Equinix Data Center in El Segundo applies there in the Evoque Data Center as well. And so, lo and behold, on each end of your city, you've got major data centers that the city and the whole South Bay, uh, Council of Government membership has access to by virtue of the SBFN. What we've done is installed cabinets at each of these data centers and created a, a major point of presence that will allow not just the bandwidth that we're obligated to provide, uh, under the contract that we have with council governments, which is internet and transport services. But we open those doors up to any other services that any city wants. but we open those doors up to any other services that any city wants. And the South Bay Cities Council of Governments has been prepped, and we'll be happy to provide you more detailed information on the types of services that are available in each and every one of these data centers we're connected to. So that's a very key point. I've also had highlighted some of the other locations within the city that we're connected to by virtue of, let's call it Phase One and Phase Two of the South Bay Fiber Network. Uh, and you can see where they are. We we're connected to the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, the Hawthorne Police Department, and there's a whole slew of other, uh, nodes that we'd like to connect to. And more importantly, if there's locations you'd like to connect to, and we've had some discussions, uh, with your IT staff, uh, we're here to be at your service and be an arm for them to leverage in case they have needs that they'd like to explore. We'd be happy to help them in any way we can. But this will give you a good snapshot of where the South Bay Fiber Network goes within the city of Hawthorne. And when you have such major employers as SpaceX, Tesla, Ring, and entities like that, along with a lot of mom-and-pop entities that really need bandwidth to survive in this COVID-riddled world, this becomes a very important thing because once those networks are put in place, connecting to them is much easier to do. These are very expensive networks to build in the first place, but to connect a little segment off of that network is a much smaller price to pay. Next slide.
Sir Dagel, sorry to interrupt. Do you have two minutes?
Fair enough. I'll speed it up. So what does this mean for you? At a high level, and we can get into anything you want to talk about later, you know, I'll be happy to set up meetings, but it really creates massive bandwidth within your community. Locations that are right on the network are very easy to plug into. This network also complements the existing city network capabilities. You folks have already done quite a bit with both, uh, uh, local LAN capability and wireless, uh, activities. And the bandwidth that we've brought to the city can be augmented and distributed over the networks you already have in place. Economic development is key. Businesses want to know bandwidth exists in in the communities they move into. Hawthorne can now, uh, control that dialogue and point to how they can provide that type of bandwidth. We'll be very hu- happy to help you do that. Uh, the other thing that we can do is, you know, when you have access to the data centers, we open up the marketplace to you. In other words, when carriers come to a certain place, it costs a lot of money usually to get those ser- services. But when there's hundreds of service providers in a data center, those costs drop spectacularly. And those are now a- available to you. And it with the smart city initiatives, all those type of things that are applying, uh, across the country and across the world, those things re- require bandwidth. You need cloud-based interoperability. There's cloud-based applications, data storage. All these things are available, uh, at the data centers and connected to the South Bay Fiber Network. Next slide, please. Basically, this slide, all it's telling you is because of the South Bay Fiber Network, prices come down and bandwidth availability goes up. What we mean by the market, bringing you to the market, is what I said earlier. It allows you to plug into many, many more things that would cost a lot more money if they came to you. Next slide, please. So as you can see, examples of use, it's it's leveraging your existing RF networks to drive more internet capacity to parks, community centers, business areas that have, uh, those type of needs. As I mentioned earlier, the techs, uh, the tech economy absolutely demands scalable and cost-effective bandwidth. You now have that. Telehealth and distance learning require quality local bandwidth. We've all seen that in in this last year with COVID. Smart grid, smart city initiatives, all these smart control devices require bandwidth. These can now be readily taken advantage of by virtue of the access to the South Bay Fiber Network. And of course, hi-def video can be plugged into these networks as well. Next slide. I'll just give you, leave you with this. This shows a schematic of how the networks could work. It allows, the purple line shows you how you can interconnect to other cities. You can connect, directly connect to any of the other cities in the South Bay. Every one of them is connected to the South Bay Fiber Network. Likewise, the dotted line shows the data centers, how you can go from one data center to, say, the police department to gain access to these type of services that I've described here tonight. And I'll leave you with that. I've taken up enough of your time. If you'd like to go to the next slide, I can close out. Really, what this is all about is a community of, uh, communities of interest. Each one of the cities within the South Bay has different characteristics, many of which we're more than happy to help you leverage and really fit for whatever it is you need. Because you already have some very smart people working within your city that know how to make use of networks, what we want to do is show you how you can make better use of other systems and other applications that can plug into your existing networks, drive down costs, and increase that bandwidth availability to your constituents, whether they be the residential community, the co- uh, commercial activities in the city, or you within government. And I'll end with that, and thank you for having me this evening. Thank you very much, sir.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, David, for that great presentation. I think everyone now has a great idea of the potential for the South Bay Fiber Network. I would like to know, what can you do to help us advertise this so that it will make us more attractive to businesses who want to locate in our city and who need broadband and who and and who de- demand it in order to, uh, to to provide the services they they need to provide?
Sure.
I think advertising is key, and I'm wondering how you can help us promote our city using, um, using this technology.
Absolutely. Well, uh, we've had a wonderful working relationship with the it, the folks over at the South Bay Cities Council of Governments. We've had this very discussion with them about how to assist each member, uh, uh, of of the COG. And we've worked with Aaron Baum and Jackie, you know, uh, uh, over the last two and a half years. And and how do we create this messaging? So there's two levels of that. There's one at a tactical level where, you know, a flyer and things like that just need to be available. It could be online, or it could be a physical form, although in COVID, not not a whole lot of people are coming into City Hall these days, I'm sure, at least as they used to. Uh, so we can help you create some virtual, uh, handouts, so to speak, of what is the South Bay Network and how can you take advantage? We're we're happy to work with you on that. And we would coordinate with the COG any other messaging that may be pertinent to your membership that, you know, perhaps I don't have the experience and understanding, you know, all your specific constituent needs, uh, to work through. So we'd be happy to sit down and have a whiteboard session to to sort of frame what those, uh, marketing programs could look like. And we'd be more than happy to pull our marketing people in to help make that happen.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Quick question, uh, Mr. David. Um, this fiber network will ha- help us out get a better price or better code if we want to do like a Wi-Fi all over the city of Hawthorne? How does it come to play with?
Well, that's a great question, and, uh, you know, we've had some good conversations with your own staff about this. And, uh, they've enlightened us on some of the capabilities that the city already has. Really, uh, we would coordinate with them, uh, and and show them how to plug into the network to distribute more capacity to those areas that you deem important. They they've got the know-how. We've met with them. We understand it. It's very clear they can do this. And so it's just a matter of where do you want it done? And, uh, that wouldn't be my decision. I'd leave that up to you and your staff, but we would help, uh, uh, help in any way you'd ask us to.
But it would be, let's say, cost-effective, you know, like it would be less money that if we would do it from scratch?
Oh, absolutely. Well, right now, the city already has, by virtue of the South Bay Fiber Network, massive internet capacity delivered to your city hall. There's a one gigabit connection that can be leveraged and used, you know, any way you want it to be. Uh, in addition to that, that bandwidth can scale if the city has, you know, larger needs. Uh, the one gigabit level seemed to be the appropriate start point. But just so you know, that's a lot of capacity. And you can do a lot. You can, you could beam via microwave, for example, which I think you're already doing in some regards, to other areas of the city and distribute that internet capacity just by using your existing microwave system. You know, and, uh, we've, we've asked about the availability of certain conduits in the city in in the event we want to expand within the city. And we're now aware that there are some conduits, not a whole lot, but any time we can save from the cost of digging up the streets and leveraging what's already there, that helps us all. So all of these things are now available to you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So what, and I I have another question, David. Would you advise then, if we, if we're doing construction projects, should we let you know when we're doing construction projects in the event that the developer may want the extra, um, fiber network, um, attached to their particular development? And perhaps you can have, uh, connect with, uh, whatever developers come into the city for that extra bandwidth?
That's, that's a beautiful thing. If we get information based on that and we can sync up with those type of developers, you know, we can drive the value proposition right to their doorstep in in ways that they they can very much appreciate. Because the cost, since the South Bay Count- Cities Council of Governments paid for these laterals and paid for the network to be deployed, it's there for your use, and we can spring out of it very easily anywhere along the route. We may have to go up a pole or down a, down the street to to access a manhole that our cables are in, but we can do that very cost-effectively now that the primary network exists in your city. So yes, we would love that opportunity to know when that happens.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine, to that point, you know, some cities, what they've done is, uh, adopted what are called dig-ones ordinances, uh, which essentially requires if there's, uh, private development or even public, um, public works projects, that these ti- this type of infrastructure by default gets installed in there so that, uh, you don't have to dig up the street again like Mr. Dagel was was mentioning, uh, to to make sure that you're you're leveraging the opportunity for the community, uh, every time that we're opening streets up. And so that's something that we could consider too.
It is, if I may add.
I'd like for us to do that. I'd like for us to consider that. Absolutely.
I I I'd add to that. So you're eyes wide open. When we have to trench a street, particularly one, a main street in Hawthorne, that's going to cost us anywhere from sixty to ninety thousand dollars per mile. I'm sorry, yeah, per mile, forgive me. And that that's a lot of money. And if an existing conduit exists that we can lease, we'd much rather pay somebody to use that the same way we pay AT&amp;T to use their conduits. So this can be i- in some ways a revenue generator for the city. We're doing that in two other cities that are members of the COG as well. We're we're leasing their conduit. And so, uh, the the city manager is exactly right. I- if those go in the ground and they're available to care, not just our company, we'd we'd tell you, make it known to all the carriers so they can, they can make use of it. Because the more competition you have in the city, the lower those price points will go. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Do, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications?
Uh, yes, I can. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer remarks to city managers for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay.
And we have one speaker tonight.
Go ahead.
Mr. Zar, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. You have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name is Matt Zarro. Uh, I am a resident of Hawthorne and a member of Street Watch LA South Bay. I've been calling into these meetings for almost a year now, trying to get our city to do a better job of helping our unhoused neighbors. I have mostly been ignored, uh, dismissed, and I've even been accused of being a liar, but they've called a liar by Eric Lee. Uh, I have recently been told that I come off as hostile, angry, and I think all of you all are bad people. The truth is, I am angry, but more than that, I am ashamed. I've been doing outreach and volunteer work helping the unhoused in the South Bay every week for over a year now. I encounter all kinds of unhoused people, and I see the conditions they are living in on a regular basis. In the city of Hawthorne, I and my fellow members of Street Watch bring food, tents, water, and other supplies to unhoused people, uh, and whatever they ask for. Every other week, you can find us charging people's phones and other devices behind Padre Park, getting to know the unhoused people there. We used to provide this service to people living over by the train tracks by Costco until you swept them and destroyed that community. A few weeks ago, a mentally ill, wheelchair-bound Air Force vet called me. He had been kicked out of past housing, his dog Max was lost, and that's with his medication. And he had nothing but five bags of clothes on the curb. He called me for help. I picked him up, I loaded his bags and wheelchair in the back of my car, took him to a mutual friend who is also homeless, and left him on the side of the four oh five with some cash. This was the best I could do. This is not nearly enough. I'm so ashamed that this is the best we as a community can muster. If I come off as angry or hostile, it's because stories like this are not uncommon in our community. Stories like these don't make you sad, ashamed, and angry. I do think you need to examine your moral compass. I don't think you all are bad people. I think you all have been negligent leaders of our city when it comes to homeless issues, and this negligence has caused people to suffer and die on our streets. You wanted to become city council members. Many of you spent absurd amounts of money to become one. You are the ones who wanted to take on these responsibilities. I call into these meetings because you are the people who have the power to change things for the better in our city. You are the people who can end the counterproductive, cruel, and illegal sweeps in our cities, our city practices. You are the people who can get basic services like bathrooms, sanitation, electricity to our unhoused neighbors. You are the people who can bring safe parking, shelter, and public housing to our city and can radically change people's lives. While none of you are personally responsible for the state of homelessness in LA County, you are responsible for the city of Hawthorne's response to it. There is no legal place to sleep in Hawthorne if you are too poor to pay for it. Not a single shelter bed, not a single project room key room, and not a single studio apartment of public housing. There isn't even a place you can set up a tent in our city without being harassed, fined, or arrested by city employees. You can change this, and I'm asking you as nicely as I can. Please help our unhoused neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zar.
Is that it, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, finance directory request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number eighty-two fifty, resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of Police Department Internal Affairs files from January first, twenty fifteen, to December thirty-first, twenty fifteen, pursuant to resolution number seventy-one seventy. Item thirteen, resolution number eighty-two five nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending and resetting the bylaws for the city's Public Funds Oversight Committee for adoption.
The chair.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, I'd like to pull number twelve for discussion.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion on all of the, uh, all the other items.
Exactly.
Please, a roll call vote, please.
Uh, who was that second by?
Uh, it would be Valentine.
Okay, perfect. Okay, uh, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Uh, Councilwoman English?
Uh, regarding resolution eighty-two fifty, can I get, uh, point of reference? I know there's two different, uh, entities when you talk about destruction of, uh, of, uh, inter, uh, files, excuse me. What are the retention, uh, policy for the city of Hawthorne in general, and what is the retention for PD? Can someone just ask, answer that for me?
Uh, yes, the retention policy actually, uh, has a number of categories. So every category of documents has a a certain time limit. Um, like for this, uh, police personnel record, it's five years. For others, it may be one year, two years, and some are indefinite, uh, such as, uh, city council minutes, uh, leases, any real estate, uh, document, uh, litigation documents are permanent, but each one is different.
Okay, and do we have, uh, a a general, if I remember correctly, it's, what's the seven-year one? Is there a seven-year retention?
Uh, each one is different, but generally, um, uh, let's say for, I would have to look if there is a general one for seven years. I don't recall one at this point.
Okay.
But this particular one is governed by the penal code section, uh, which the city council has actually been adopting, uh, this resolution or a similar resolution every year for the past twenty years, as long as I've been here. Um, and it's just, uh, governed by both the government code and the penal code sections.
Before PD, it's a five-year Before PD, it's a five-year retention?
Yes, for these types of PD documents.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good, Chair. Yes, go ahead. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, are these documents maintained electronically at all or are you just totally kind of destroyed?
Uh, no, they're just hard copies.
Okay. Okay, make a motion? Um, I'll give it to Councilmember Reyes English. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor. Um, now is the time and place to declare, declare publicly received sealed bids for Holly Park and Ramona Park Improvement Project. Project number twenty dash zero six. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were six bids received on December twenty-second, twenty twenty. All were accompanied by bidder's bond. The prices are as follows. G two K Construction Inc., two million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand and thirty-six dollars. CLS Legacy Construction, two million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand and seven dollars. Mycon Construction, one million, uh, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Martinez Landscape Inc., one million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Aramex Group Inc., two million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. SEM Construction CP, one million, five hundred and ninety-three dollars, uh, thousand dollars, uh, and six hundred.
I'll make the motion.
To refer to staff for study and recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Right. So I second that. Motion, uh, please do the roll call vote for that.
Hey, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council members voting yes.
All right, let's go, item number sixteen?
Orance number two-two-zero-nine, first reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adding chapter three point two-six to title three of the municipal code. In order to codify the real property transfer tax ordinance of the city of Hawthorne for introduction.
To the Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to pull for discussion.
It is up for discussion.
It's not for an introduction, so.
No, you can discuss it.
Okay, I want you.
Well, I'm going to introduce it. It's going to be introduced regardless, so go ahead and discuss it though.
Okay, so, um, if I, if I could get a clarification, um, if someone could please explain what codification means? And, uh, what uncodification means and if, uh, why there's such an urgency now for, um. For the uncodified ordinance to be, I would assume codified.
Um, and it's a very simple answer. When it was adopted back in nineteen sixty-seven, for whatever reason. Uh, the city council or whoever put this ordinance on the agenda, uh, did not codify it so that it's part of the municipal code. But frequently, we get questions from the public about our real property transfer tax. And sometimes it's difficult to find it because it's not in the municipal code. So to make it easier for the public so that they don't even need to contact the city clerk's office to, uh, to find out about it. Um, it's going to be in the municipal, municipal code, uh, once, uh, it's introduced and approved by the city council. So it has been an existing tax, uh, since nineteen sixty-seven.
Yeah, I see that, yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm, I understand. Go ahead, um, Mayor.
Okay, is that cool? Uh, is that good? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Item number seventeen?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, I want, uh, table the item seventeen for, for, for the discussion later. Okay, so I want to pull it. I want to table the, the.
Well, I mean, does anybody want to discuss it? Does he have concurrence or what?
I'll second that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, all right, that's fine. Go ahead. Okay, item number eighteen, general matters. Uh, item number nineteen and twenty? Mr. City Clerk, that's you?
No, that's you, uh.
Okay, I'm so sorry, yeah. We have two colors here. All right, City Manager Eric Lee? Um, you're going to provide us a report on the process for filling the vacant treasurer's position?
Yeah, it's just a real quick update for the council. Um, as you recall, on December fifteenth, the council decided to fill the vacant city treasurer position with an appointment process rather than a special election. The filing period closed on January eighth for this process, and we had a total of seven applicants. Uh, they were Muhammad Awad Allah, Benjamin de France, Gregory Fallon, Ryan Richard. Marie Poindexter Hornback, Amy Shepherd, and Jose Tobar. Uh, this morning, Mr. Awad Allah withdrew his application for this position, and so we now have, uh, six candidates for this position. At the special city council meeting on January nineteenth, each candidate will have an opportunity to address the city council for three minutes. Members of the public will also have one minute each, uh, to provide their comments. Thereafter, the mayor and city council will each nominate one candidate as a finalist. And then during the regular city council meeting on January twenty-sixth, each candidate will have an opportunity to address the council again for three minutes. Uh, members of the public will have one minute each, and thereafter, the mayor will request each city council member to identify their selection. And once consensus has been reached, a motion shall be made to appoint the selected candidate.
Okay, um, I, I did have a discussion with one of my councilmember colleagues, Mr. Patterson, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to suggest a, a change in, in that process on the next meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So, yeah, so no, this is the, based on our discussion with, of Mr. Patterson, no, Councilmember Patterson, I'm sorry. Selecting one person, it's just gonna, you know, it's, we're not going to get anywhere.
Thanks.
We're not going to get anywhere. It's like, it's going to be the whole iteration stuff that we did the last time when we appointed a council member. Remember, and then it got messy and people were trying to jump around selecting different candidates and. It, it just gets really weird. So what I want, what I was, what I discussed with, uh, Councilmember Patterson was that we all select three. Of our top candidates and, uh, email that to our city clerk. He'll have a tally. He'll ask us and confirm, are these three selections? He'll name them. So we can all send them at the same time, and then he announces it after because if I'm going to say who my candidate is. And then somebody else is going to see who my candidate is, they're going to, you know, they'll, they'll have an opportunity to switch it around and strategically do all this stuff. So I think it's more unbiased if we just choose a top three and then make a tally of how many votes. Is that correct, Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, I think that's a, a great idea to kind of narrow down who the, the three, I guess you can say, final, uh, uh, choices would be. All right, the three people who got the most tallies from all the, all the council members. And then those three, uh, present themselves to the council and, and, um, the next treasurer would be chosen from those three.
So then what would happen on the nineteen?
I thought we were going to do all this today. I thought we were going to choose the top five finalists today, actually.
No, that's, uh, set for the nineteen.
So I guess that all that will happen on the nineteenth where each councilperson would submit their top three choices. Uh, the top, the three who get the most selections would be identified as finalists at that meeting.
And if there's a tie between any, like, say, second or third place or something? Then we could just, like, everybody could just vote on those two. Uh, another blind vote to select between whoever's tied.
To the Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree for us to select three candidates, but, uh, I would, for us to expedite this, the, the conversation on the nineteen. I would suggest to have already a scale between one to five. So your top candidate will get a five, and then your second one will get a three, and second one, the third will get a two. So, so then, after we present all our three candidates. And then on the nineteen, whoever, we will add all the scores from the three, the three candidates. With my score, with Ms. Valentine's score, or you, or Mr. Vargas' score. So the ones that have the top, that's what it comes at, the, the finalists.
But then that's, that's going to, what if, what, that's going to force us to. I wanted it, okay, the reason I, I left it like that, and I think I talked to, uh, Councilmember Patterson about it, was that. This way, it doesn't force us to rate those three. We're stuck between all three.
Well, no.
What do you think they, uh, uh?
Mr. Patterson, because we had a conversation too.
Uh, I, I think I like the idea of everybody choosing their top three. And the three candidates that get the most, uh, selections are the three that are, are the finalists. Um, maybe in rating people, that's something that we can look at for us choosing the final person, but. Um, but the finalists, uh, what Mr. Vargas said, I think makes the most sense.
It just, we could get out, it'll get us, get out, it'll help us get out of that hole quicker. And then if we want to implement what you said for the like, out of the top three. Actually, when we have the top three, that would be easiest.
Yeah. I, I, I can tell you that I already have my three picks and I already give them a score, right? So, so I know exactly what I'm going to present on the nineteen.
Uh, one question, one question I have for all of you is, uh, we were going to have the candidates, uh, each, uh, speak on the nineteen. Did you want to, you know, give your finalists before you have a chance to hear them speak?
Well, be, uh, be, based on the resume, Russell, we, we understand who's qualified and who is not qualified.
Okay.
Because we have to application the resume.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, but, uh, listening to what you're saying, I'm thinking maybe what you can all do is to put that information in a sealed envelope, and maybe we can just go ahead and open it at the, on the nineteen. So that, uh, you know, nobody will know, uh, what.
Well, uh, something, we could either email, either email the city clerk, he can announce it, or we, or somebody can go around the offices and we give you the, uh. Everybody's going to be here on site, so somebody could just collect those, confirm that those were our choices, you know, just because, you know.
Oh, yeah, you can, yeah, you can give us an envelope or sealed envelope on the, just before the meeting starts.
I mean, my position's always been that whoever we choose from are, have some kind of expertise or experience that, that's around finance, accounting, investment, something that, that's kind of, uh, connected. And so, uh, yeah, I think that we can look at the applications and kind of, uh, make those decisions or kind of weed out. Those that are, are, you know, have some kind of relevant experience to kind of move on to letting them present themselves. Um, us ask them questions and then kind of choose that, that final ca, final person.
To the Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, well, I like that we're having this discussion, and I like that there's a consensus with regards to selecting three versus one. The other thing that I like is the city attorney's suggestion that we at least hear, uh, listen to, um, you know, their ideas, uh, for the city in this post. I think that's important. Um, things in writing, um, you know, we could obviously review that, look over that. But I think it's important that we at least, uh, hear, uh, from these individuals that have gone out of their way to apply and submit resumes, et cetera. I think we owe it to them at least to give them an opportunity to speak on the experience portion that Councilmember Patterson just mentioned. Uh, you know, investments, banking, uh, finances, just to see exactly how deep and in-depth they, uh, truly are experienced to, um, to hold a post of, of treasurer, because I know there's a lot of work that Councilman Patterson has put in, has implemented in his time versus other folks that have sat in that position that didn't do anything. So, uh, from investments to, you know, growing our portfolio here in the city, and I think that's important. There has to be, um, a higher margin in which we put folks under so that we're not going backwards, we're propelling to assure that we continue to invest and make monies. Uh, you know, retro, retroactively forecasting for the future, et cetera. And I think all of this is important. I think it's important that we hear from these individuals that think or believe that they have the know-how to do that.
Good Chair, I, I'm not, I'm not against that. I, I think that's fair to let everybody be themselves and then we cast our, our.
Hold on, hold on, slow down. Okay, Mayor Protem.
Okay, so you just have to, uh, keep in mind, okay, so when, when you open a position. You receive, let's say, twelve applicants. You review the, the, all the twelve applicant, the one that you think that are qualified, that is what you invite them to come for interview. So you don't interview all the, all the twelve applicant and then go and select. So this is the same process. So we receive seven applicants, right? And then you would, we to select, e- each one of us select three applicants, and then we can hear from those applicants that we think have potential.
Yeah, for clarification, I was.
Just a moment, guys. Ray, Reyes, go ahead.
Yeah, it, just for clarification, I mentioned that I like the fact that we picked three. So I'm referencing those three from each of the members that they selected to be able to speak. I didn't, I, I, for clarification, to get out of context, I'm sorry about that. But out of the, the six that we have, whoever your three are, um, those three for an opportunity to speak.
Um, one of the things that I wanted to mention, and this is not to, uh, this is not to counter what this, uh, anybody has said about listening to them on that day, but the application itself already has the questions that they were supposed to answer. Which is, uh, why do you think you should be appointed? Uh, what is there specifically in your background training, education, and interest which qualify you as a potential candidate? And do you have any current obligations or responsibilities that should be considered, uh, as a conflict for the appointment you are seeking? What is your objectives? For the appointment you're seeking, how would you help achieve those objectives and goals? And any other comments? So, uh, I mean, I wouldn't say that any, uh, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem's approach, uh, was faulty because he didn't get to hear them speak, because he already had an opportunity to read what they said. And I'm, I'm not really saying either that Councilmember Reyes English is a, a desire to hear him once more. Um, because he maybe, maybe she's, she's locked between a couple, and then hearing them speak would, uh, help, you know, her make a decision or anybody else, right? But, um, we did already have that option to read what they had to say for themselves already, so. Um, I think I'm close to making a, a top three selections myself, based on the applications.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that, that's the same, we, we saying the same thing. We, we have all the applicant. We got seven applicant, we reviewed them, and then those we think that have potential, that is the one that we will invite to come and speak to us. Uh, uh, you know, like I said, you have your three, they'll have my three, David will have the three, so all of, so we will come up and say, okay, these are the, the three finalists that we want to hear from. So then from those three, we can have one selection. So we can go from seven to three to one.
We can do that on the nineteenth, we could do that beforehand. We could choose the top three beforehand. And so, we don't even have to do it on that day, but, I don't know. I just, I just want to make sure that everybody's, uh, ideas here are considered and that nobody feels uncomfortable with the process. Does, does anybody, what, I mean, what?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to one, the other of having all six present themselves before we cast our, our top three. I, I, personally, I don't care. I'll go either way, but I do like the idea of each houseperson casting their, their selection, their top three. We find the three that get the most kind of tallies, and those are the three that we'll be choosing among, choosing among for, for the next treasurer.
Yep.
Is everybody ready to do that even today?
I'm ready, I'm actually ready to do that today.
Yeah, mine's are done.
Councilmember Patterson, are you ready to do that today?
Again, I'm open to letting all, all, all six, uh, present themselves, but if I had to choose today, I, I know, uh, you know, I have an idea who I would choose.
Oh, you know what? Okay, in order to expedite this process, we have six candidates. I'm ready to make that decision today. Mayor Protem, you said you were. Councilmember Valentine, you're okay, Mr. Patterson? Are you okay with this? I mean, we already got sort of like a majority, but can we do this today, guys? Anybody?
Uh, to the Chair.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, during this time and during the process of, um, you know, um, going out to the community and asking for those individuals interested to apply to apply, um, I was provided some articles from the Daily Breeze on one of the applicants. And it's my understanding that they don't reside in the city of Hawthorne. And so I want to be able to vet that out, and I'm not believing, you know, uh, what people say. However, when you have an article and it's got the person's name on it and it says the residents of Gardena, that's a concern. And it's a written article in the Daily Breeze. So I want to make sure that, um, the applicants, one, all of them reside in Hawthorne. And, uh, I want to be able to feel comfortably knowing that in fact, they do live in Hawthorne. And, um, I have the article. I could show it to the city attorney. I could show it, uh, to anyone. But, um, that brings concern to me, and I think it, it should, um. But um that brings concern to me, and I think it it should um, you know, be addressed.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as part of the the process to get to a final selection, uh the police department will be doing a background on on all the finalists. And so I I think residency is definitely an an area that we can confirm at that point. Um, and so um, just know that maybe all the candidates have consented to that background.
Okay.
Why can't we do that now?
Yeah, there's no reason why we can't just contact that person immediately and have them confirm whether or not they live within the boundaries of Hawthorne.
Yeah, cuz that's concerning.
At least, at least just to confirm that, yes.
Um, if if we have a su- sufficient amount of people that are ready to make their decision today, uh Mayor Protem, are you and Councilmember Valentine? You guys are okay with making it now? Okay, so then, so then I'm uh. I have a slip of paper, Mr. City, uh Mr. City Manager, you're in the building with all of the council members uh present. Uh, I'm gonna ask you, within the next couple minutes, to go to each of the offices, collect these. Make a tally, confirm that these were our choices with each individual, okay, and then tally them up. And then give us the top three, okay?
Uh, just one question, it's really clarification for the city attorney, do do we have any concerns from a a Brown Act perspective or public meeting about? Um, these, these tallies and, you know, um, you know, selections not being. Uh, public from the, from each of the council members.
I'm not too worried about it, only because I'll put it on the agenda for the nineteen uh to reaffirm what was the action that was done tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
I I'll be in each one's office momentarily.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna hand this off to you, so everybody nice and calmly, just put your name on the top. Put your three underneath and then he'll uh he'll tally them out. Okay, I think this is, I think I like this, uh it's gonna work out.
So just write it on anything, is that what we were doing?
Yeah, I mean, I wrote it on a piece of paper right here, like a small piece of paper.
Mayor Vargas, would you like uh Ms. Kimberly Mack to present while?
Let's knock this process out.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum uh right now, so we can't conduct any business.
But we still have a screen, we s- we still have a video running, right? These are the top, okay, so what page was that on?
Let's see what's going on over here.
Yo.
I was still in the office, I could hear everything going on.
Oh, thank you. All right, we have a quorum, let's continue.
Mr. Mayor, are we waiting for the tally or are we moving forward with the House?
City manager, please, gonna give us a tally.
So Paul was asking if we can continue the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could, but I think I'd be interested, just the city manager Lee.
Yeah, he's still collecting.
Yeah, not too many numbers, math shouldn't be too hard.
Yeah. City manager Lee, what do you got?
Trying to avoid doing math on camera, so uh bear with me, one more minute.
Oh, good, this is good, I mean, you know, the.
A lot of pressure on the city manager there from Mayor Vargas.
Maybe we should have a finance director help him out.
And in the meantime, congratulations to uh to your new child, uh Dr. Jimenez.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I have to leave my wife alone with both of them tonight, so. I'm gonna pay for that when I get home.
Oh, my god. Hey, uh, Pablo has a new uh uh play buddy, right?
Yeah, that's good, it's a three-year difference, so it's kinda nice.
Yeah.
He's helping out.
Awesome.
He can feel like a real big brother.
Yeah, he definitely, he's he's, he refers himself as Big Brother Pablo now.
He's almost six weeks, right?
Yeah, yeah, six weeks.
Awesome.
Yeah, but thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
What do you have?
I see uh city uh manager sweating there.
So I I I do have the results of the tallies, uh our our three uh top candidates are Gregory Fallon.
Oh, oh, wow.
Marie Poindexter Hornback and Jose Tobar.
Jose Tobar.
Uh, just to be consistent with the Brown Act, I'm gonna place it on the agenda on the nineteenth. For you to vote on those three finalists on the nineteen.
Yes.
Okay. And you would like all three uh to come to the council meeting on the nineteenth uh and. Be available to speak and also to answer any questions.
Oh, okay, and let's and let's, let's establish the numbers, um so your top pick will be a number of a three. Your second pick will be a two, and then your next one will be a one, correct? Is that correct, Mr. uh Mayor Protem?
Well, I I gave them different, I went from one to five, so the, my top candidate had a five. The third, the second one got a three and the third got a two.
I like three, two and one.
Three, two and one, it's fine with me, so.
Three, two, one, man, let's do three, two, one, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. You're coming up with some like really. All right, three, two, one, let's just keep it simple.
But invite those three people to come on 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 the nineteen and then um. Uh, maybe we should uh, or also, because you only said three minutes, if we're gonna give them three minutes plus. Any question that we have, right, so that would have no.
Oh, that that's your decision, it doesn't have to be three minutes, it could be ten minutes, it could be fifteen minutes, however long uh you wanna ask questions. Is uh should be the rule. Okay.
I think you should have like a three to five minute opening statement and then.
Okay.
All right.
So so to be clear, we're gonna invite those three candidates on the nineteenth and then uh following the opening statement and any type of interview question process. Uh, the the council will make a decision at the conclusion of that meeting uh with the three, two, one process described by the mayor and the mayor Protem. And then we will not be coming back on the twenty-six uh to to deal with this item.
I'll only uh remember that the uh the after the nineteen, uh the candidate had to go through the uh whistle at one, right? And then you have to go to the process of of uh clearance. Background check.
So I I think we could do the background on those three candidates before the nineteenth. Decision can be made on the nineteenth.
Oh, very good, uh Russell, yeah, you can do that, that'll be good, great, if they can do all the three of them. Uh before the nineteen or before the twenty-six, that'll be great.
Okay, I I like to ask a question to Councilmember English. Councilmember English, are any of those three candidates the ones that you had a concern about? Or you'd rather not answer that or what? I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Are you, you need to unmute yourself.
I apologize, I said I'll leave it alone.
Okay, you'll leave it all, okay, that's a a very good answer. I like that diplomatic answer, thank you.
I'm only responding to constituents.
Okay, but we're okay, though, right?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, um so no one, everyone, all of the three candidates. Are starting out at exactly the same score, no one has an advantage over any other at this point, am I right? They all stand equally at this point.
Yes.
Right now.
Nothing's carrying over.
Okay.
But but to the chair.
Yes.
Why would there, why why would there, I guess, why would there need to be a. A scaling format at this point, if that's the top three, it's the top three, right?
Why not everybody just vote for one?
A- and then, you know, during the nineteen, is it the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna have them come and speak, right?
Correct.
So at this point, it doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't matter how they score, you know, five, four, two, one, what have you, it's just. Those are the three that came up, we all know who they are now.
Yeah.
And now it's up to them to. Give us their spill, tell us.
No, that's, that's what we're saying, we're there all.
That's what I, that's what I said, actually, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And and then the nineteen, when when they uh, you know, give us the introduction, they introduce themselves, we ask question and then we. You know, will come up with the finalists based on that one, two, three.
Oh, okay.
I I, okay.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you, miss. Uh, Councilmember, let's go to the next item. Kimberly Mack.
Good evening. Hello, I am Kimberly Mack, with the uh, I'm the Housing and CDBG Programs Manager for the city of Hawthorne. Um, and I come before you tonight to give you an update on the Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Program. And to request for the city council's direction to establish grant programs for businesses or to expand programs for. Uh, to address other homelessness issues. So tonight, I would like to give you an update on the program. Um, the, the city of Hawthorne was approved to establish the Rental Assistance Grant Program in August. Of twenty twenty, we launched the program eagerly um in October and we received around. Um, sixty-seven applications. And um those applications were to be funded with the Home Investment Partnership Program, Community and Community Development Block Grant. Um, CARES Act funding um to the tune of one point seven million dollars. The applications were accepted online through the mail and they were at that time available for a drop-off. Um, for process, and we also were accepting them through lottery because we had a huge belief that we would receive more applications than funding. Um, however, due to the number of applications that we actually received, which is much less than staff anticipated. We reopened the program to make sure that just everyone was included. And that we reached um, you know, the neatest segment of our population. And we opened that program in November twelfth, on November twelfth through December first. And they received, the city received uh an additional ninety-eight submissions. Uh, to be processed on a first come, first served basis, since the lottery process was no longer viable, considering the number of applications that we received. So in total, we received about a hundred and sixty-five applications. And what the program allowed for is a hun- one thousand dollars uh per month for a maximum of three consecutive months. Um, of funding and to be paid directly to the owners. Now, I wanna be, you know, very clear about the Housing Department's uh responsibility for advertising. This program, we made so much effort to try and get the word out there, we placed ads in the um. The Hawthorne Press Tribune for five weeks, we advertised in on multiple of the city's websites. We advertised and had uh Newsbox air on Channel Three and Channel Twenty-two. We also posted uh messages on the city's social media sites, which is Nextdoor, Instagram. Facebook, YouTube, we purchased Facebook Boost to get the word out there even further. Um, the information flashed over two electronic billboards over the city. And three public work signs were placed on the busiest roads trying to gain attention for it. Staff even distributed flyers through the uh Senior Meals Program, we distributed them to churches. We also held, due to COVID nineteen restrictions, an RSVP-only community engagement event. Which is the first one that the Housing Department had held um at Zola Davis Park. To talk to residents directly, answer their questions and assist them with the application process. Staff sent out email blasts, more than eight thousand eight hundred. Um, emails were sent out to applicants who applied for the city of Hawthorne's uh Section Eight program. We passed out flyers to open businesses at that time because businesses were limited to uh COVID restrictions. And we forwarded just under twelve hundred mailers to owners of rental properties within the city of Hawthorne. We also hung two banners in English and Spanish advertising the program about the community engagement event and. Um, at Bicentennial on Zola Davis Park. And, you know, we partnered with our public service agencies, the Housing Rights Center, New Star Family Justice Center. Family Promise of the South Bay, Michael's Learning Center and the Richstone Family Center to promote the program. So we went through great lists to try and get the word out there so that people would know what we were offering, to get as many applications in as possible. And considering that, we wanted to try and figure out why the low application number. And so we have come up with the, these three factors, uh which could have potentially impacted our program. One is owner participation. Two is the Los Angeles County Rent Relief Program that launched August seventeenth through the thirty-first of twenty twenty. Just before our program, and then tenants reluctance to apply if they had already applied for the Los Angeles County Rent Relief Program. For, you know, we spoke to several landlords and a lot of them just simply did not want to participate because they wanted the full amount of money that was due to them. They simply did not wanna take the max of three thousand dollars that we were offering them at that time. And um there is a a clause in the program that says that. If you agree to allow us to assist your tenant, that you have to refrain from going through with an eviction process equal to the number of months that we assist. So if we assist them on for a full three months, then for three months, you cannot file an eviction on this person. And some owners just were not um willing to go through with that requirement because they say. That non-payment of rent is not the only reason for evictions at this time. You know, they said that since um they had so, tenants had so much protection that. Uh, tenants weren't treating them with the respect and there was just so many other reasons. Uh, lease violations that they had to consider as well, and so many owners would just rather wait out the eviction moratoriums. Um, you would think that something is better than nothing. But those were the responses that we were getting for owners not willing, being willing to fill out our paperwork. The Los Angeles County Rent Relief Program was the first rental assistance that in Los Angeles County that included Hawthorne residents. There were several before, but Hawthorne residents, for some reason, were not included, the zip codes were not. Now, this program offered assistance to income-eligible households that were financially impacted by COVID nineteen. Um, limited to those who are thirty per, at thirty percent of the median income, they were giving up to ten thousand dollars. And those who are currently at fifty percent of the median income. And those who are currently at fifty percent of the median income, they were giving up to seventy-five hundred dollars. So this was our competition. Um, and I reached out to, uh, LACDA, which is Los Angeles County Development Authority. Who administered the program for Los Angeles County. And they were able to give me some numbers of the type of applications that they draw in, that they drew in. They received fifteen hundred and four applications from Hawthorne residents. In comparison to the one sixty-five that we received. And their current application status stands that they still have on their eligible lottery waiting list, eight hundred and eighty-one applications. They've paid or assisted a hundred and fifty-one families. And they have two hundred and forty-five applications still in process. And I know this because when we would follow up with the owners, they would get our applications confused with LA County's applications. And we go back and forth about the logistics of the differences of the program. Um, also, they had ineligible or closed and not processed applications due to some ineligibility. At two hundred and twenty-one. Uh, meaning those folks would not be assisted. They had assistance need for twenty twenty-six applicants. So, the total assistance they provide to date in funding is seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. And they are still in the process of assisting at least two hundred and forty-five of Hawthorne residents. So finally, the city's and the county's program required that tenants, you know, certify that they did not receive federal funding from another source. To avoid double subsidy issue. That's a huge issue, um, with the Department of, of Housing and Urban Development. And this required deterred applicants from applying for the program. Because they knew they had already applied for LA County's Rent Relief Program and simply were waiting for an answer. Now, I can't say for certain that these are guaranteed reasons for the numbers that we received of, of applications for our program. But they certainly play a big role in, um, in comparison to the results that we have so far. Um, so just to give you a current update, staff is diligent working to process all the applications received. And so staff currently has a hundred and seven applications in process. We had five duplicate applications because we did a round one and a round two and people applied for both rounds. Um, we had fifty-three ineligible and closed not processed applications so far. Uh, that means that people either did not live in Hawthorne, they were on a Section Eight program. They refused to complete the basic, uh, application forms and payment agreements. They refused to provide identification or they, um. Refused to provide a viable lease proving that they were residents within, um, the City of Hawthorne. Uh, no one has been denied for proof of income because HUD is allowed that income can be verified through certification. So, uh, staff is working with the owners and the tenants to comply with program regulations by extending deadlines. And that's why you'll see that, uh, no one has been paid from our program to date. Because we're, there's a lot of back and forth. And until the files are complete, then we don't wanna pay out the funds because we want them audit-ready immediately. Now, we anticipate that, um, the first and second round eligible applications will be paid before the end of January. That is the housing's goal. But, the good thing about not having paying owner just yet allows us the opportunity to come before you to recommend. That we extend the period of assistance from the approved four months to the, to six months. Which is allowed through the Federal Register, who gives HUD the authority to enact waivers. To extend program guidelines. And so one of these waivers extends the permissible term for emergency rental assistance to a household able to pay, unable to pay rent. Because their income has decreased due to the coronavirus pandemic from three to six consecutive months. This will be a huge benefit to our applicants who have been suffering for a very long time now. Um, and, and so that's something that we really want the, the council to consider tonight. Additionally, in consideration of the surge of COVID nineteen and the most recent safer-at-home, you know, health officer. Uh, orders, staff also recommends that the city council consider reopening the Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Program. For a period of at least thirty days. Um, or until funds have been exhausted in hopes of getting closer to the goal of assisting three hundred Hawthorne families. Um, doing so is not any great act. Under the federal guidelines, the city does not need to amend its twenty twenty-one. Uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one action plan to extend this existence. To the maximum of six months or to reopen the application period. So that's something I'd like for you to consider. Additionally, something I'd like for you to know and receive direction on is that in September, uh, fourteenth of twenty twenty. The city council was awarded an additional nine hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. In round three of the distribution of the CARES Act Funding for the CDBG Program. So these funds, uh, we have, they must be spent within six years from the date of the award. Unless it's otherwise extended by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, staff would like direction on how city council would like to use this award. And a few options include establishing, uh, business assistance program that provides grants. To microenterprises and small businesses impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. Uh, funds can also be used more specifically in small businesses to provide the support for payroll, rent. Personal protective equipment and other costs required to resume or expand business operations. Another option to consider, uh, is to expand the programs to address homelessness. By funding additional public service organizations who serves Hawthorne's homeless population. These organizations, you know, implement a wide variety of programs, including. Food banks, COVID nineteen testing, supportive housing that provides wraparound services. To ensure successful and sustained development. And so upon direction from the city council regarding the use of these funds. A substantial amendment to the city's current twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one action plan. Will be prepared and presented to the city council for approval. And so tonight, I come to you making the recommended, the recommended motion. That one, the city council approve the period of assistance. To, to increase it to six months at one thousand dollars per month for a total of six thousand dollars. In assistance for eligible applicants. Two, that the city, uh, direct and reopen, direct the cit, the staff to reopen the rental assistance program for a period of thirty days. Or until funds are exhausted. And finally, that the city direct the staff on how, uh, the city council would like to use these, this new CARES Act Funding. Uh, in the amount of the nine, uh, hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. That does end my report tonight and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I definitely agree with, with, um, what, uh, Kimberly is, or, or Ms. Mack is, uh, requesting. As far as the nine hundred thousand, I, I think it's a great idea to offer some type of grants for our business community. Some type of support for our business community and I do think it's a good idea to see how earmarks and that money for homeless, uh, you know, everything I should say. I agree with a hundred percent.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, yes, I, I agree with, uh, council member Patterson on the businesses. Um, I think that, uh, as far as the businesses are concerned, um, I'd like to see, um. A set aside of a certain amount to the businesses. Um, I'd like to see an application process with a set of questions and a deadline. Designed to determine the monetary impact of COVID nineteen on the businesses. And then we select based on the application, based on the merits of each application. Um, which businesses, um, should, or, or the staff can make the selection. Based on the merits of the application, which businesses, um, should receive the funding. But I think. I think we have to do more than one thing with the funding because the funding. That particular funding, the nine hundred, the, the nine hundred, uh, thousand and change. Um, there are a lot of priorities that have to be met with that funding. Businesses, I definitely think our businesses should be given assistance. I also think we need to set aside some amount for homelessness issues because we have, um. We don't have the, uh, we, we really don't have. A, a, a structure within the city to, to take care of the homelessness, the homeless in any, any great degree. And I think there are, there are some projects that we can take advantage of, for example, Caltrans. We could, we could funnel some money into that project so that we could have some, have Caltrans, um. Have, uh, the, the, the Caltrans project funded by us. And, but I think we need to do that. So that, the nine hundred thousand dollars, I would suggest. That we, uh, have an application process and, and, uh, provide monetary funding for businesses. And for homeless issues. The other money, the money involving the, um, the, the, the rental assistance. I think we should extend the pro, the program until the funding is exhausted for that. Um, and, uh. As far as I'm concerned, um, you know, whenever that is, we know that we're going to have. Um, increased numbers of people who are going to have problems meeting their rent. Because there's so many people now that have been impacted since the surge. So you're going to have more people unemployed, you're gonna have more people who are going to need re- rental assistance. So I don't think that money is going to waste. So I think we should just go ahead and spend it until it gets, until it's exhausted.
I agree.
Those are my views.
Through the chair. All right, so, um, I agree with Ms. Valentine and, and Councilman, uh, David Patterson. Um. Yeah, we should. We should have the business, but we, we can do it, you know, the, the, uh, on a same way that maybe the, the Californians are doing for. Uh, the small business lo- loans or, you know, or grants. Uh, make sure that, uh, people I need to receive this, these funds. Uh, I agree the six thousand dollar per applicant, that, that's a very good, uh, incentive for maybe the landlords to participate. Because we know, you know, they want to have the capability to have more time. Or even more additional time before they begin the eviction. And I believe the, the new federal dollar, uh. Act was passed about two weeks ago, we probably is gonna get more money for rental assistance because there was twenty billion dollar. That was passed on the Congress that is gonna come to the cities and states. So probably we got more money for rental assistance also. Now, let me talk about a little bit about the homeless program, uh, because we were challenged, uh, last week when we, um. Ms. Valentine and I attend the homeless task force. Uh, Caltrans actually is willing to lease. Some of the land on, um, on their property right there close to the one oh five and one twenty. There, because, uh, their board and the state of California. Have said that Caltrans have those, uh, lands that are not being used can be leased, leased to the cities for three years. To come up with some type of emergency shelter program. And. The Caltrans representative on that task force last week said, we have a land for Hawthorne to use. So, Mr. City Manager and Kimberly, so you guys have to contact Caltrans and, and we do have a name. And I think if Vaughn is listened, uh, uh, Jesse Ramirez have the name and the contact of the people of the Caltrans. That are willing to lease that land for a dollar per year, for three years. To come up with some temporary shelter. They call them a pilot shelter. Uh, and I believe Redondo Beach just doing, did that next to the, um, the Galleria. And they were able to do fifteen units. And that, and I believe each unit is about ten thousand dollar. To help the homeless, that, you know, to be there temporary. So it's something that we can maybe explore, contact the Caltrans and then. The, uh, those units actually could be run by the, uh. Face-based organization that is in San Pedro or to the, um, the. What you got the over here in, um. Yeah, Harbor Interface. Or the, some other, uh, homeless, uh, entities that we can partner with, like Laza. And the Harbor First Bay and, and, uh, the one right here in Hawthorne, just keep my mind. Uh, that they were right, they will basically the one to operate those, those units. So it will not be the City of Hawthorne. We just basically have to provide the money. Let's say if we put aside, say, four hundred thousand dollars to create that program. So, so, but, but believe it or not, they said each, each unit can cost up to sixty-eight thousand dollars to, to run, okay? So fifteen units for the Redondo Beach cost them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But then you have to have some type of structure. And this is where Harbor Face Base and Laza comes in. And run those programs that will not cost the City of Hawthorne on a monthly basis. But we would have to, basically to create that initial phase, the pilot. To give the money so they can bring those units. That's like a temporary, they have shower, you know, everything, electricity. But Caltrans is willing to lease the land to Hawthorne for a dollar a year.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, Mayor Portem is exactly right. Uh, Caltrans, uh, is interested in that, uh, in that, uh, type of arrangement with the city. Um, Vaughn Norris, our Director of Community Services, um, is already in contact with, uh, with Caltrans and we've got a meeting on calendar for next week to begin that discussion. So. Um, you, you know, with, with the council's direction to continue moving i- in this road, we were gonna explore that to its fullest. Um, some of the ideas for that, uh, that property, not only a, a pallet shelter. Um, type of situation, but also potentially safe parking. Um, which would address, uh, the growing number of homeless that we have in the City of Hawthorne that are living out of cars. So, uh, we're, we're going to look at that and, and we will, we'll bring that back to you. And if, uh, this nine hundred thousand dollars is something that the council would like to use towards, um, programs like that. We will bring back options for the council to consider.
Yeah, so make sure, you know, so we can just say half and half, that nine hundred thousand half goes to the business, half goes to the homeless. And because I do believe if Kimberly, if, if I'm right or wrong. That we pos- possibility we're going to receive more federal dollar for hand, rental assistance. Based on the bill that was passed in Congress for twenty billion dollar rental release to the, to the states, right?
Uh, we petitionally can. We don't know specifically just yet how much or when, but yeah, that's, uh, that's open for us now that that money has been released.
Yeah.
Uh, just real quick, I wanna commend, uh, Kimberly Mack on how aggressive she was in getting that reach out on rent relief. I wasn't aware of all those outreach methods and, and that's, you can't ask her anymore than that. So I just wanna commend you on that.
I agree. Thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, Kimberly, we've been very good, aggressive there.
Thank you.
Um, to the chair.
Yes.
Let me just, first of all, um. Start off by commending, uh, Mrs. Mack. Thank you so much. Um, the efforts have been very broad. Um, I've had several constituents calling me and I'm glad that you brought up some of the three. Uh, reasons for folks not participating, which was, um, owner participation, which is very, very. Uh, true. There's a lot of owners that don't wanna participate because they're not getting their full amount of rent. Um, two, there's another county program that folks apply to and I'm understanding from what this discussion is. This evening is that they can't dip into both. If, if that's the case, um, they have to do one or the other and obviously the county gives more. And three, the reluctance. Um, but I wanna add the fourth one. The fourth one is. We have folks in the community that are not Spanish, or English speaking, they're Spanish speaking. They don't have the resources or the know-how, which is, you know, a computer, going online, checking. These types of things are important. You got folks that are not as educated. And you just basically have folks that say they did not know. So, although the efforts have been great and, um. Ms. Mack listed all those efforts with regards to ad- advertisements, with regards to outreach at the park. Application processes and whatnot, although it was very, uh, minimum, minimal to, you know, those who applied. Um, I, I, I don't know what else we could do to get the word out. Uh, that's, that's the, the concern here because there's still people. Texting and calling me saying, is it gonna, you know, be brought back? And then we're having this discussion tonight. And so thank you for that and that consideration to, to extend it for six months, which is greatly needed. Um, that's important. Um, with regards to the small businesses, businesses have also reached out to me. You know, PPE is, is a concern. Um, currently, they're not able to open up. They were told to close again. Um, there's payroll to be made, but more importantly, there's rent to be paid on these brick and mortar businesses. And how do you do that? And so there's a lot of desperation at this point. And at the same time, with regards to homeless. I understand that coming next month, February, there will be a school uh discussion and report on homeless here in our city and discussing uh that, more importantly. I I I want to make sure that those folks already that are handling our homeless are doing exactly that with regards to the outreach placement, wraparound services, programs, et cetera. And, you know, when you have folks coming online here and saying that we're not doing that, it brings great concern, it makes it makes me want to bring those entities that we gave thousands of dollars to, and I don't know how long ago, but bring them in and have this discussion one by one, exactly what have they brought in the times that they've been funded to these uh individuals that we have here in our city. This includes families living in cars. Um there's great concern there and I'm glad that Councilmember Mayor Protem Montero is bringing the point of a a location, identifying a location here in our city that possibly we could implement ourselves. Because when you talk to the regional issue of homelessness, everybody is trying to to get those dollars, it's a competitive effort for every South Bay city to get those dollars. And these individuals that are able to secure funding and provide homeless services are the cities that are pushing the hardest to bring those resources, programs and housing into their city by making space, finding land to be able to build out and bring um temporary mobile units for these types of services. So having said all of that, nine hundred and forty one thousand dollars, you know, it sounds like a lot, but it's going to go pretty quickly. So um I understand for some folks, you know, businesses, i- i- it's important for them, you know, everybody's everybody has uh, you know, their 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 topic. But I again, I want to bring all those homeless agencies that we've already provided contracts with and monies to to find out exactly what they have done or not to assist the homeless here in our in our city. And so anything else, um I look forward to February's discussion on that and uh suggestions and uh really bringing not just, you know, paper with regards to these entities, nonprofit organizations, uh outreach workers, et cetera, people that are doing the actual work. But I want to hear from them, I want I I I I want to understand in numbers, how many people they have actually housed uh in 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 temporary housing, um et cetera. So thank you again Kimberly for that, i- i- if there needs to be a motion to be made um this evening, um I'll make that motion to move with the recommendations that were presented to council from staff.
Second.
Second, uh Roca Ball, please.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, I I think there's broad consensus for uh for the motion to extend uh or to open up the the rental assistance grant again for a period of thirty days and to move that from three months to six months worth of assistance. Um and to move forward with business grants and homeless services, um uh expanding our outreach in that area with this additional nine hundred thousand and and federal funds that we have. Uh what the the question I have for the council is, um uh Councilmember Ray English is exactly correct. Uh nine hundred thousand sounds like a lot, but um we when you wanted to buy that between uh two disparate programs like business assistance and homeless services, um that's going to go very fast. Um my understanding of the the pallet shelter project that Redondo Beach is doing is uh they they're providing the land, but they're also spending about nine hundred thousand dollars to provide the services necessary to have a a proper temporary shelter at that facility for six months. And so that's the the I think it's the the water, the electricity, um the um uh sanitation necessary, showers, that sort of thing. And so uh looking for your direction from the city council, um as we start uh developing a proposal for you to consider, um how 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 would you envision carving up those funds? And I don't think we necessarily need a dollar amount specifically, but some direction on uh where you'd like us to either um uh go down both roads equally or um spend more uh propose to spend more money on one side and the other. I think it would be helpful for us in developing a proposal for you to consider.
Chair.
Yes.
Um initially, I think um I would recommend that we um split it in half just about as as close to half as possible with the um four four hundred and fifty thousand or so going to assistance for small businesses that were impacted by COVID nineteen um with the with the application process I recommended. And the other half going to um to assist uh perhaps uh uh Caltrans in building the um the structures on the on the one oh five uh for the homeless and whatever wraparound services are needed there. With the understanding that when more money comes in, I'd like to see more money spent on small businesses, I think the I think that four hundred and fifty thousand will go by in a flash. But I think that there will be more money coming and I think we should assist our businesses to the extent that we can because um I don't know the extent to which um businesses have been impacted. I know from the lack of reaction to our Hawthorne Business Expo, there's always so much enthusiasm. This year I've had um not as much enthusiasm and and the businesses I usually expect to hear from, I'm not hearing from them. And some businesses are businesses are saying they're really hurting, they've lost ninety percent of their revenue. This is really bad, we we just don't see it from here, from from the council. But these businesses have been truly impacted. You only have to go across the street and look at the Marriott Hotel. They used to have such burgeoning business, now it's just practically uh practically empty. The restaurant is hardly hardly um, you know, is is not is not um not very active either. So the the businesses are hurting and to the extent that we can help them, I'd like to see us do that.
Through the chair. Yes.
Uh Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Patterson. Um I I want to go back and I want to make sure that the extension for the six months is till funds are exhausted, not thirty days. I don't want to have to come back and do an additional uh extension, let's just continue until it's exhausted. Uh with regards to businesses and um um funding, businesses have resources, businesses need to reach out to the Small Business Administration who have been given thousands, if not millions of dollars for businesses um to apply for dollars for their for their uh operations. This includes PPE, this includes making payroll, this includes keeping their business afloat. And those resources are available, they are available. They're probably getting more funding if applying through a Small Business Administration than they would through the city of Hawthorne with the dollar amount that we currently have. When you talk about um funding for businesses, I would like to see, you know, um city manager, if you could provide the city council, like roughly, how many businesses do we have in the city of Hawthorne? How many businesses have you heard from that are asking for assistance, uh et cetera? I think that's important, but I think where um these dollars should should be directed to and don't get me wrong, the business community, please don't think that, I'm not championing you because I've had heard from businesses already with regards to their licensing and having to pay license fees for a business that has been shut down for six months, seven months. And so there is concerns in the community, the business community with regards to their business licensing here in the city of Hawthorne. And I will will address that here soon enough. But with regards to what we currently have, and I really doubt we're going to be able to fund ongoing through a pilot project, a homeless um uh facility such as the one in Redondo Beach and and others similar. The cost is high and I think we need to make a feasibility study on that. So city manager, um if you could get us a feasibility, exactly what uh other entities in our communities. Um there's some in Council District Nine that have uh opened up for temporary, there's trailers that have been brought in, there's uh shelters that have been opened, but there's a feasibility that needs to be brought to the equation as to what that looks like and how much that would cost the city of Hawthorne monthly to operate. And so that's very important. But uh extending for rental assistance for our renters is important. And with regards to renters, renters need to respect the fact that they're living in a rental building. Landlords are suffering too. So I have heard from the landlords also. And it's really shameful when I hear that tenants are not being respectful or adhering to the to the laws that have been put in place to pay your rent and, you know, taking folks for a ride, and that's really shameful. But um having said all of that, rental assistance, housing, uh homeless needs um and business needs are all priorities. But I think we need to make feasibility studies to assure we're going down the right path because the last thing we want to do is open up something and not able to complete it fully and have to shut it down. So I am very um, you know, proactive when it comes to fully uh vetting out the un- the unknowners, things that we can't see at the moment because these are the types of things that are going to hurt us at the end. And we can anticipate or expect that, you know, there's going to be dollars coming our way anytime soon. Again, everybody is in need, dollars are being, you know, being put out there, uh there's competitive grants, there's all kinds of stuff happening. So if city manager, you could just give us those um those for the next council meeting in February with regards to the homeless uh organizations that have been, you know, what they're funding, what they were given funding wise and who's, you know, holding them accountable. And then uh everything else that has to do with uh operational costs for uh envisioning a um homeless um uh I don't know what to what to call it, a homeless hope center uh here in our city.
Uh through the chair, I yeah, I agree with what's been said. Um we don't have to do what other cities have done just because, you know, Redondo Beach has been million dollars every six months, it doesn't mean we have to do the same type of program, there's something that we can do uh to support the homeless where where there might be a place for uh people to park overnight. You know, I don't know what all the options are, uh but I agree with Council Councilmember uh Valentine that it's a good idea to split those dollars up and and give us some options like uh Councilmember Ray English has said, give us some options, let us know what what things cost so we can make a decision as to where we want to allocate those funds. And and the council member is correct, um there is a lot of funds out there for small businesses through the SBA. Uh the EIDL program is still open, uh where uh businesses can get a um get a loan through the SBA, thirty-year loan at three point seven five percent. All they need to do is have, I guess, fair credit and have uh lost business. And there's the PPP loan as well that is uh forgivable. Uh they're just opening up the second round of that, uh where businesses can go and go back, essentially go to the well second time to get more monies to cover payroll. Um so all of those are correct, but I definitely think it's a good idea for Hawthorne to do its part in supporting our business community, even if it's uh providing some um some relief in in fees or some services to allow them to operate a little bit better. Um one hundred percent, I mean, I think all can be accomplished.
Okay.
I would like to, I would just like to.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so let me address uh issue by issue. Now, um I agree with uh Ms. English about the about the pilot shelter, but the pilot shelter, it's not going to be running by the city of Hawthorne. So so think about it because there is there is money from the Los Angeles County through Laza because we we vote, we vote on a proposition um that was uh to give money all all the cities are giving money to this LA County to provide homeless service, okay? So so those type of of facility is a partnership, not just with the city of Hawthorne, with the Caltrans, but also with Laza, with Facebase, with PAT. So all of these are entity coming together to to make sure that those pilot shelter is running smooth. So it's not basically that's going to be coming from the uh our general fund, okay? So so do more investigation on that point, uh Mr. City Manager, because there is county dollar there that will help run those facility. Because like Ms. English pointed out, that we've been giving money to some organization to do homeless service and then we still have complained that people are not being helped. So so the point is that Hawthorne, we don't have shelter program, we don't have voucher program. So how we going to address the homeless issue in the city of Hawthorne? That is the number one issue that was on during the campaign. It was a lot of thing about helping the homeless, it was a lot of, you know, even the the city of Hawthorne, we went from ninety-four to two hundred pe- individual homeless, so we have doubled the numbers. So people, if we do not provide them with safe parking or place to stay, these people are going to be stay on the street, so we have to be creative. And and I understand that it takes money, but we can find the money based on the partnership you have to create with the Count of Los Angeles, with the Facebase uh from Harbor Facebase Interface, from the PAT, from Sam Magazine. So we have to be creative, how can we address the situation so the homes will not be under the freeway and and in our streets? Um the there is also, you know, right now, for example, the California is accepting application for the California Small Business uh COVID nineteen relief program. Uh the deadline is is until uh January thirteen. Uh so so people can go over there and apply and it's if if you qualify, it's a free money. So, you know, even, you know, I I have submit three three applicant on behalf of three business. Um so there is a lot of money there for some for small business, they have to find a way how to do it, how to apply for it. But I agree with Ms. Valentine, we need to help our own small business right here in Hawthorne to figure out what are their needs. Do they need money to pay their their license fee, do they need money to revamp their business? They don't need money to put some sidewalk caf- you know, uh cafe, to make them much more conducive for people to stop and 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 dine when this COVID nineteen disappear. So we need to make sure that this business is going to survive, and that's the number one issue because not just because of this COVID, but in the future. Uh because we know a lot of them might not have paid their their leases or their rent or their mortgage. So how we going to help them, it's a key important to find out their needs. So we're not just going to put the money out there and then everybody, so no, we need to find out exactly how can we help them an effective way. Um so we do need to help the small business, we do need to help our homeless and like, you know, that this guy uh Max Dazarian come every meeting addressing the people still on the street. Those are the key issues that we need to figure it out, how we going to help the homeless uh to make sure that our streets are safe, okay? So that's the kind of thing that we need to put this money into and if we have to be more creative, uh let's do partnership. Let's go get more money from the county, from the state, from the federal government uh because there is money out there and we need just to find a way to go get it.
Right.
Through the chair, there are points raised that I would I would just like to um to address. And one of them was the 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 small businesses that uh should know, for example, of the monies that are available to them through the county or through the state or through the federal government. I think that's an important point. What is lacking here is some of our small businesses don't know, that's the problem. They may, maybe they should know, but they don't know. Some of the small businesses in this city, um the owners are not well-educated. And even though we may put things online or on our website, they don't see it, they don't know about it. So this this discussion has raised with me another issue, and that is we need to find a way to do outreach to our businesses, to give them information on what they need to do so that they can take advantage of programs that are available, so that they know how to fill out forms. This is maybe a discussion for another day, but I think it's something that we definitely need to address. Our businesses, our residents, a lot of them have uh issues with with language problems, with 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 not understanding complicated forms. We need to find a way that we can reach them so that they can uh get the information and understand what it is they need to do so they can take advantage of government programs. But again, that's a discussion. But again, that's a discussion for another day.
Okay, folks, um, let's move on to the next item, do we have a conclusion here?
To the chair.
Yes.
I had made, I had made a motion and I think you seconded.
I second it, yeah.
Roll call vote please.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the motion?
That was item number twenty, the report that we heard from Mrs. Matt.
But what's the motion?
To accept it.
To accept the motion, to accept item number twenty.
The report.
Emergency, emergency rental assistance program and, uh, establishing grant program for businesses. And expand, expand programs or services to address our homeless. That we extend a thousand dollar a month to, uh, to, till it is exhausted for six months. And, uh, that's, that's what's listed.
Okay.
From one thousand to six thousand.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Clarify, the, the motion that was originally presented in that report, um, is an application for thirty days reopening. And I think the, the consensus from the council is to have a, a, a rolling application period until funds are exhausted. So I think we just, I want to clarify that that's, we're gonna do that to the extent allowable under, uh, the federal guidelines that are currently available.
Yes.
Correct.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas? Yes?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, um, I can, okay, folks, uh, thank you, thank you guys all for that. We have a lot of items on the agenda, I don't want to take anybody's time, there's like five or six decided, uh. Uh, city council member discussion items. If we can try to be as expedient and as efficient as possible, that'd be great. Um, remember, one of our aims is to try to have quick, uh, efficient meetings. Um, like, kinda like we did in the la- last two or three years. And everybody's issue, question, everybody's item is important, but if we can try to just. Quickly and efficiently do, I'll do whatever I have to, to be able to move the meeting along, okay? And if I try to interject, just to try to move things along, please don't take it personal, it's just that we need to. We want to get through as soon as possible, okay? Alright, so. Mr. City Manager, consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have items twenty-two through twenty-six on my consent calendar for your consideration.
I make a motion?
Second.
Make, uh, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Hold on, I don't think so, I didn't want to pull something.
Well, we're already voting. It's too late.
Oh, who, we're on the city manager consent calendar?
Yeah, correct.
That's fine, yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yeah.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, yes, I have items number twenty-eight and twenty-nine for your consideration.
I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Uh, with clarification, city manager, you said, you, you, did you pull an item?
Yeah, uh, Mr. City Attorney, I think item number twenty-nine was intended to be pulled from the agenda.
Uh, oh, you know what, that was in the script, uh, I.
Yeah, so.
Twenty-nine was, was pulled out.
Twenty-nine has been pulled.
So we're, 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 we're approving, uh, item number.
Twenty-eight and thirty.
Twenty-eight and thirty. Good catch. Roll call vote please, did you already call it?
Yeah, I'll do it again, and these are for items twenty-eight and thirty.
Yes.
So councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yeah.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will recess the city council meeting and call to order the successor agency meeting with all members present, Mr. Secretary. May we have your item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one item for your approval. Item thirty-two approval of the successor agency to the former Hawthorne Redevelopment Agency minutes for the special meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote ref- reflects chairman and agency members voting yes.
Okay, is there anything further? If not, I declare the successor agency adjourned and call to order the city council meeting with all members present. So these are the items that I'm telling you guys, we've got a whole bunch. We do not have any closed sessions. Do we have a closed session? Oh my god.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Alright, let's do it. My item, reorganization of city council, including selection of mayor pro temp. Chair of the Public Funds Oversight Committee and alternate, and city council member representatives to various organizations. We will first pick the mayor pro temp. Any? Oh my god. So this is for selection of the mayor pro temp, do we have an action here?
I, I could make a recommend, uh, a nomination, how's that?
Commendations.
Uh, I, are, are we, are, what is, what is the procedure here, uh, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know.
Uh, let me, uh, Mr. Mayor, let me recall what we did, uh, last year, right? We, we voted last year that, uh, we were going to go by seniority, right? That year, we would have to elect one mayor pro temp, okay? So we went, you know, from, it was Ms. Valentine, then it was Heydar Awad, and then it was me. And then the next person that was going to be the next one to have seniority, so. Now we got two new council. As on the same footing. Plus Ms. Valentine and myself that is a senior. I don't know.
Do you have a recommendation?
It's attorney, that was right or wrong.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm just going to be, go ahead and nominate myself, I'm going to nominate myself for mayor pro temp.
I have a recommendation, I, I nominate Patterson.
Well, actually, she has, she has a motion on the floor before you did, I'm, I'm gonna second your motion, Councilmember Valentine. So it's up for a roll call vote?
Okay, so I start?
Yes, okay, Councilmember Montero?
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Vargas, let's go back, let's go back for a minute, because, because, uh, uh. Ms. English had the floor, said she has, she had a recommendation, then we go to, we went to Ms. Valentine. So, so we need to be, we need to be fair when we're voting, okay?
Okay, so then, uh.
I.
Ms. English had the floor first.
When there was, when there was this pause, I said, I have a recommendation.
Yeah, so.
I have a recommendation, and then that's when, you know, council member, or.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, fine.
My rec- my recommendation is Councilmember Patterson.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So let's, uh, Mr. Mayor, let's get a little bit of discussion here before we vote.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, because, because what I'm understanding is that, look, if, if we're going to go based on what we did the year before. Go by seniority, so this mean the process will begin again, right?
Yes.
Uh, the process will begin that because this David, it's not, not, nothing against David, not against Ms. Ms. English. But since they bring you council. We should go back to the seniority. Of, of, of the five councils. I'm not saying that next year I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be the, I'm gonna be, because I, I will not, I will not put my name on it. But just think about it, I'm just saying, being fair. Everything is about common sense here.
But if you pull up the, to the chair again.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
So if you pull up, uh, the, the item, the item which is number, what you said, thirty-four. It, it outlines it, right? You give an outline of how, how it, how it works, what's the process and, and whatnot. Or it's on here, but anyway, I have it somewhere. It says that you could nominate, you, each person could nominate.
Alright, so then, so we have two names on the floor.
Alright, go ahead.
So we have two names on the floor, we have, uh, councilmember Patterson and we have councilmember Valentine. Okay. Mr. City Clerk, can you go through each of the council members and ask for their decision between both of those two individuals?
City attorneys, uh, we should.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably easier if you just do one at a time. And, uh, uh, since, uh, uh, Councilwoman Angie Reyes English has a motion and a second. And I also realize that, uh, Councilmember Olivia and I don't, I don't know if there was a second. Or and Vargas seconded that one, uh.
Well, there's a choice, there, you have a choice on the floor, they're.
Probably easiest, everybody.
Just go ahead, just choose whoever you, just, just go through the vote, choose one of the other.
Two different votes.
Okay, is that okay, city attorney?
Okay, I guess that's clear enough, okay.
Okay, we're, we're going to choose what?
You're gonna choose between, uh, Councilmember Patterson or Councilmember Valentine?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. City Clerk.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Abstain.
Ah, que latindo.
That don't work out at all.
Yeah, Councilmember Patterson?
Patterson.
Okay, Councilmember Reyes English?
Patterson.
Councilmember Valentine?
Valentine.
And Mayor Vargas?
Uh, Valentine.
Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Montero, you need to break this tie.
Break the tie. Oh my god.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah, you can sit in the driver's seat on this one, go ahead, we got it, we get it.
Mr. City Attorney, do I have to vote?
I mean.
You're gonna.
Do you want to just table this matter and just continue to the next meeting?
So you could just make a decision, council, uh, councilmember, you're, you already started kind of.
Yeah, two fine people, why I'm gonna choose one or one or another?
We know, we know, and there's nothing, you know, it's just like the seniority aspect too, but you know, I'm just, it's up to you.
Okay, and there's, there's.
For a year, right?
It's for a year, it's just for you. Uh, we have a rest of the meeting.
No, 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 my, my sense is I'm gonna go with Ms. Valentine at this time.
So the vote reflects, uh, Ms. Valentine, three votes and Mr. Patterson, two votes.
Because it might, might.
Congratulations, Ms. Valentine.
We have two new councils, plus we have a veteran, so. We should go with the veteran for now.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Valentine, it's council member and mayor pro temp.
She got more experience.
Well, Patterson have sat there for a long time, he should know too.
Yeah, but, you know. As a treasure.
Alright, guys, we will next pick the, we're gonna go through who is going to be the chair of the Public Funds Oversight Committee. Uh, I ha- I nominate Councilmember Patterson for that one.
I second that.
Okay.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Uh, next we will pick the alternate of the Public Funds Oversight Committee, if one can't go, so this is the person who goes. And I think sometimes you guys could go together, but I think it's just one or the other, do I have a nomination?
I would be alternate.
Second? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
We will confirm Councilmember Valentine's appointment to the League of California Cities Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, do I have a motion and a second?
Move to approve that, that, uh, application.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Now, we're going to go through all the city, uh, council, city council member representatives positions. Starting off with the Sentinel Valley Youth Services. Current delegate is Olivia Valentine, would you like to keep that position?
Yes.
Anybody would like to be the alternate?
Yeah, I'll be the alternate.
Councilmember Montero? Thank you.
I have the time.
For the city selection committee, I am the delegate, I would like to keep that position, would somebody like to be my alternate?
I'll alter.
Okay. English? For the County Sanitation District, number five. Um, I am the delegate, it has, I have to be the delegate. Um, but I will need a alternate.
Well, right now, I'm, I'm on the committee.
Yeah, okay.
I'm your representative on the sanitation district.
Why didn't it? It, it represent, okay, it's there, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong page, you'll, you'll stay, right?
Yes, I'll stay.
Okay, thank you. Independent Cities Association, I, I'm supposed to be the main? Anybody would like to be an alternate, Montero or anybody else, uh, uh, speak up now?
I'll alternate.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Montero? Okay, thank you. No, no, no. Okay, independent, independent, the ICRMA, which is the Independent Cities Risk Management Authority. Uh, ICRMA, Councilwoman Valentine?
Yes, I'd like to keep that position.
The current alternate is staff, are we gonna keep staff?
Yes.
We recommend that, yes.
Stevens. And Tomikawa. League of California Cities?
I'd like to be delegate.
Are we, okay? English? Uh. Councilwoman Valentine, we'd like to be the alternate, you could sometimes attend also, even though you're the alternate.
Uh.
Or you want to pass?
I'll be the alternate.
Yeah, I'll pass on that.
Okay, uh, Patterson? Got it, League of California Cities Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee? What do we got for that?
Yes, um, I'd like to retain that position.
Okay, Valentine? The Clean Air, the Clean Power Alliance, who wants to be the delegate?
Montero, and I think Ms. English wants to be the alternate, and but we can still put Frank in there too, just in case.
Yeah, that's fine.
English and Feng, Frank Feng.
But I'll be the, I'll be the delegate.
MTA Metro South Bay Service, City Service Con- uh, Council.
I'll be a delegate.
Yeah, English?
Yeah.
I'll be often.
Patterson? South Bay Cog, Boards of the Directors, Valentine, do you would like to retain that?
Yes.
And I'm the dal- I'm the alternate.
It didn't say that, but.
Yeah, I am the alternate.
The alternative or the alternate?
The alternative.
Well, kinda like the alternate, yeah, it's the same thing, okay. South Bay RCC. Do you have any recommendations, Mr. Eckley?
I wanna be the delegate for that.
You think it's okay, Mr. Eckley?
I used to be the alternate.
Yeah, I, I think a- any of the five members of the city council would be great for that position.
Oh my god, me too?
Can get it.
Do you want me, do Montero, are you gonna, do, I'm sorry, council member, are you gonna do delegate or alternate?
Well, I, I was gonna go be the delegate.
Okay, you're gonna be the delegate, I'll do the alternate.
Okay.
Alright, South Bay Skag?
Yeah, I'll be a delegate.
Valentine, would you like to be the alternate?
Yes.
Again, you guys could attend together if you needed to, if you wanted to.
I was just gonna say, the last time I attended, uh, in twenty eighteen, um, no one went.
No one went, so you're okay with it, alright, cool. The South California, Southern California Cities Consortium, JPA? Uh, let's see who's on here right now.
Nobody.
Uh, hold on, guys, uh, it's bacon. Anybody wants to be delegate?
Why is that is all about?
Yeah, what is that?
Russell, do you, do you have any insight into what that JPA does?
No, um, maybe, uh, Councilmember Valentine knows.
No, I don't, actually.
Oh, okay, so you, you're qualified. Oh, okay, so you, you're qualified to be on there.
Alright, well, Valentine?
I'll do the alternate.
I love it. Alright.
To the Chair, Mary, you got that?
So one of the team building activities they do is like a five mile hike. Every month. Okay, Councilmember English and Valentine?
Well, since she's the delegate, she'll be hiking more than I will.
Okay, that's right, that's right. I'm just kidding, it's not, there's nothing. West Basin Water Association Board of Directors?
Yes, I'd like to stay on here.
Well, Councilmember Valentine's going to retain her seat. I'm get, I'm deferring to the person who already holds it.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, Patterson, you wanted to do something with that?
Yeah, I'll be alternate.
I make a motion to accept all these changes?
That good.
Roll call vote? Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. Alright, so we got about one, two, three, four, five, six items? Can we try to go through these as efficiently as possible, please?
Nobody, I'll be efficient.
Yeah, no, seriously, you know, we could, uh. Discussion about options available to the city for the legalization of cannabis. Montero, Patterson?
Montero.
Okay, thank you, Mister Patterson, Mister Mayor. This is just a directive to the City Manager and also to the Planning Department to come up with, uh, some, uh. Uh, innovative ideas for us to think about zoning, about cannabis in the City of Hawthorne. It could be, uh, dispensary cultivation, distribution, so we want us to go out there and find. I don't know, maybe a consultant can help us out, draft our, our ordinance for, for this, uh, venture. Because as you know, the City of Hawthorne, the property, the, the, to establish a tax on the, on the cannabis's. Uh, dispensary pass overwhelm, uh, for, in the City of Hawthorne. So, so we have an obligation to come up and, and do this because we know, uh, that, that is talking fed, in, uh, in Washington DC. To legalize marijuana as a fed, on a federal level. So that's mean, you know, California is in the position that, you know, is gonna generate a lot of income. And if the cities do not have dispensary or any type of cannabis program, they will not be part of the money that will be distributed to the cities. So we have to make sure that, uh, we will have a share of the pie when the time come, and I think it's coming pretty soon, so we have to begin this process. Mister Patterson, go ahead.
Well, I, okay, I'd like to.
Hold on, I give Mister Patterson's floor because, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, second what, uh, Councilmember Montero said, I, I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the different license types that the state allows. Uh, testing, um, you know, manufacturer, all that stuff. And, uh, yeah, come with recommendation, what makes most honest sense for the city. Um, additionally, uh, I know there's a number of municipalities that have legislation that exists. So it shouldn't be hard to kind of grab, you know, copy and paste and cherry pick what some other cities are doing and kind of bring to the council to, to discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so I'm going to come at this in two different ways. First of all, let me just say that, um. We were made a lot of promises, uh, a few years ago, when cannabis became legal, recreational cannabis became legal. And the cities were made a lot of promises about how much money they were going to make. And we didn't adopt, um, we didn't, we didn't agree to allow retail cannabis in our city. And we watched to see what was going on in the other cities. I did not see cities making all this money that we were promised that we were going to make if we adopted cannabis in the city. As a matter of fact. There were, there were problems that, that, that came as a result of having can, legal cannabis. A lot of the cities were saying that. They had legal cannabis, uh, and they couldn't make the money they thought they were going to make because the illegal vendors were all around them. And the people went to the illegal vendors, and the illegal vendors were, were, um. You know, were swamping them as far as the amount of money they were making. Um, and so I don't, you know, and, and plus the amount, the cost involved, if you're, if you're going to set up cannabis. You also have to set up an infrastructure in your city to, um, to enforce the, the law on cannabis. And that costs money. So when you break it down to revenue and, um, expenses, you don't really make as much as, as was promised. And I, I'm, I question whether it's even worth it to, to develop the infrastructure to, to have cannabis. I do, I question the, the viability of it and how much you really are going to make from it, that's the first thing. The second thing is. When it comes to the culture. I know that everyone wants to, uh, to, to, to have a culture now where everything goes. And, um, we all accept whatever is the newest, the newest, uh, uh, thing that, that's popular. I could accept the idea of cannabis when it came to medical marijuana because I, I could accept the fact that there were people who were saying. That, um, you know, that, uh, they had to have it in order to, to, to survive the pain that they were feeling. And I know there were even abuses as far as that was concerned. I can't square my feelings about recreational cannabis as a, as a. Because I really feel that it's part of the breakdown of the culture of this country. People, how do you tell your children that they're not supposed to smoke? But they see cannabis being smoked all around them, so what are they going to do? They're not going, they can, they can't smoke cigarettes, but they can smoke marijuana? How do you, how do you square that? What are you, what are you saying to your children about what they're putting into their bodies for recreation? Are you saying it's healthy? Is this, is this something that's, um, is this part of the, the, i- is this something that the, the, the society should encourage? I know you can't stop it because, you know, people are going to do what they're going to do. But I really don't like the idea of government encouraging, um, people to, to, to engage in unhealthy, um, activi- activities. So, um, I would, I would be opposed to our allowing cannabis in the city.
Let's just, let's just go ahead and vote on it. Just vote your conscience on this one.
To the Chair?
Go ahead, ma'am.
I, this is, this is a, a discussion, correct?
Yeah, sure.
I, I, I'm just asking because, um, you said vote on it, I don't think we're, we're, we're not voting on something, are we?
No, well, just to, to, to accept that they're go, wait, yeah. Well.
So let me just make, let me, let me just.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am, go ahead, go ahead.
Finish my discussion, and I understand it's, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Montero and Councilmember Patterson. Uh, yes, there is policy in various cities that I've already implemented, uh, uh, cannabis recreational use. And you could go directly to the City of Los Angeles, who has a cannabis department, and, uh, Cat is the Director. But, uh, there's, you know, businesses like anything, um. Patterson spoke on this earlier, it's easy to find policy and outline legislation that speaks to, uh, a cannabis department or agency or implementing. Um, a cannabis policy in our city. Matter of fact, City Manager, I wanna make sure we pull, uh, policies that we've already passed back in, I believe. Uh, twenty sixteen, seventeen, somewhere around there, that speaks to pass-through medical use. Uh, there was also policy that, uh, provided families and households to have a limited six leaves, I guess, or something like that in their homes. There was some policy that we've already passed.
Six plants or something.
Yeah, so we need to be able to bring that back to see what it is that we passed, including, um, the pass-through for medical use. Um, we have to include a social equity program, um, and there has to be a, a, a consensus with regards to, um. You know, um, forming, forming a, um, a policy that addresses each and every concern. And that includes the bad actors, like Councilmember Valentine said. Um, with regards to promises of what these types of businesses would bring us, I don't know necessarily that. If there was any promises per se, I, I, I don't know about other cities, you might want to research City Manager again and do a feasibility. On cities such as Los Angeles, such as I think it's, um, Bellflower. I hate, there's some other cities that we need to get, uh, pull from to see what they're find, what, what, what have been their revenues. Uh, since implementing these types of, of businesses, all of this is important. And, um, to fully understand the social equity program or understanding of it, there needs to be a fairness. And that's why there's a social equity component that needs to be im- implemented. To assure that whatever route we go through, uh, with regards to an implementation, what that looks like. That there's fairness across the board, and this also needs to address the, the enforcement portion of it. Uh, and how it could be enforced, um. I know there was discussions with the Hawthorne Police Department to candidates with regards to how that would be enforced. And I brought up some recommendations and suggestions how it could be enforced. Um, whether or not I supported it, I said I wanted to see what it looked like, um, putting it on a ballot and seeing what the P, the Hawthorne voters, uh, thought. And obviously, we saw what they thought. We saw the large number of voters that were for it. So, um, having said all of this, I'd like to see some, some of the things I just made mention brought to us. Um, so that we could have a real thorough, um, understanding on that. Uh, it's very important.
Is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and what? To the Chair, I want also the Planning Department to begin the process of our look at the zoning, okay? Because we know places, if we come up, uh, discuss about how we're gonna do this, we need to make sure that, uh, we have, uh, a zoning planning. Before we put the, is it the hose before the, the cart, before the horse or something like that? Because all these other issues is gonna come up when we begin the discussion and the public hearing. Uh, how we gonna do the, the program, if it's, you know, like Ms. English said, you know, social equity strategy. Um, how many dispense we gonna do, how many licenses we gonna issue, how many this, 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 that? All this will come, uh, in the middle of when we was figuring it out, if in fact Hawthorne is gonna do something. Baseds on some other evidence, uh, and but we, uh, we want the planning, the, the planning apart to begin looking at the zoning issues about this. Uh, because I think, you know, the voters, uh, Hawthorne gave us a mandate twice. Because, you know, when they vote to legalize marijuana, sixty-eight percent, the people of Hawthorne voted yes. And now these other, these other texts on cannabis is reported, yes. So we cannot just sit down and, and, and see all the dispensary being open in our backyard, on the non-incorporeal areas of, of LA County. Like Del Air, Wiseburn, all those places. And, and our police is still already impacted with it, so we're not getting zero dime, zero. Uh, and like I said, the State of California will release money from, from their revenues bases on the cities that have cannabis's program. And the federal government, and we know our President-elect, he said he's in favor to legalize marijuana on the federal level. So that's mean, everybody now will be able to be, open a bank account, and we will know exactly how much money they are making. I raise my, I make a motion, you can move forward.
Second?
Please vote. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
No.
And Mayor Vargas?
Upst- uh, abstain.
The vote reflects Mayor abstaining, Councilmember Valentine, no. And the three other council members voting yes.
Your next item, right?
Okay, next, uh, next item, ordinance to the council to make the Hawthorne Memorial Center a permanent voting center for at least five days during the Los Angeles County scheduled elections of the future. Montero?
Alright, thank you, Mister Mayor. I brought this up because, uh, in November twenty twenty, uh, we scrambled to find location where people can go and vote. At is, i- is unconsciously that we cannot, uh, allow people to vote in our facilities, right? Because these are public facilities. And since we do election, you know, every other year or two years, you know. Uh, so we should be able to say that Hawthorne Memorial Center, the Sun and Venus Room. Will be a permanent voting center every time LA County will have. A voting in process, so at least for five days. I'm not even saying eleven days, because you know how the county now, they, they have eleven days, five days, one day. So at least we can give them the Sun Room and Venus Room for five days during the election period. So I want this to be on the books as an ordinance to say, so when it comes down, we don't need to be going to the City Manager or to the City Council to, to go start the process. No, it's in the books, so they just signed the contract and that's it, okay?
Alright.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I concur. Do we need a vote?
Need to vote, no.
Vote.
There's no need to vote, I concur.
Vote, vote.
Okay, whatever. Roll call vote, please? Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. Thirty-seven, Exploration and Partnership with Giving Purpose that is launching this flagship campaign, You Are Enough, in order to help people that are suffering from depression due to COVID nineteen.
Okay, this is, uh, uh, you know, somebody contacted me, uh, because they have this campaign going on, it's about like a billboard campaign. Uh, said you are enough. They want to send the message out there because a lot of people are suffering, uh, you know, through the depression, mental health issues, especially through the COVID nineteen. So basically, they want us to partner with the city, uh, so we can put the message on our billboard for about three to four weeks. And also, I want you guys to give me permission to allow them maybe to put, uh, a billboard on the, uh, on the Jim Thorpe Park, right down the castle. Uh, with that message, you are enough. So when, when people goes and search you are enough, they'll tell them about, you know, how to, how to communicate with other people, so they don't feel alone, right? Because right now, a lot of people suffering out there with the mental health and depression, so they wanna keep message. Because the goal of the, uh, of this, uh, giving purpose is to make people connect to one another. Make sure that, uh, people are not suffering alone. So it's just to, to give them ability to put billboards. And probably, like I said, like at the park, and also maybe to put on the electronical billboard for at least three to four weeks, that's it. Okay? May I have any minute?
To the Chair?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
I, I think they would get more use out of our digital, um.
Yes.
Billboards than they would, uh, posting it at a, at a park per se, because no one's at parks today.
Yeah, we want, we want them on the billboard, the electronical billboard, but just in case if, if, if somebody donate one billboard, they wanna put it like on a structure. I would say let them put it at the castle at the, because, you know, we're gonna have childrens coming to at least maybe sometime soon.
Uh, I, are you talking about the, the one that's next to the, uh, Historic Society, the Hawthorne?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, right there, you know, the, you know how the castle are there?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so, so they would, they would, because they want also to put something to the, in the neighborhood. But primarily, yeah, we wanna give them access to our electronical billboard on Hawthorne Boulevard and on Crenshaw, right?
That's fine.
Yeah, and then also, you know, if, if they receive donation to put a, a, another billboard on, on a structure, I'm saying. Uh, I want your blessing that I can say, yes, they can put it at the castle at the Jim Thorpe Park.
Yeah, that, I, I, I will second that.
Thank you.
We already voted, didn't we?
No.
Okay, ma, make a motion? No, uh, the motion is to, for Mayor Pro Tem, you wanna make the motion?
Well, to, to partner with the Giving Purpose, to put the message on our electronical billboard and also at the castle if, if they choose to do so.
Yes.
Okay, got it, Russell?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
I second that. Roll call vote? Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes, and I had seconded already.
Oh, you did? Okay, I thought they changed it or something, okay, that's fine. Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Uh, yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. Alright, COVID nineteen cases in Hawthorne, Valentine?
Yes, um, so our case rate in Hawthorne is really high. I think we have the third highest in the county. And, um, something's wrong here. We're, we're, we're not, in Hawthorne, we're doing something wrong. We're not following the guidelines. So I'd like to first of all, um, I'd like to first of all, get the word out more robustly to our residents. Wear a mask, stay six feet apart, wash your hands frequently. And I was thinking, how can we do that? I'd like to see us do it periodically on our website. And, and I, since, since I know now that we've got some sophisticated, high-tech people that know how to send out social media posts, I'd like to see it go out from the city in social media. Um, I'd like to see it on the electronic billboard, uh, to just keep reminding people, because our people seem to be forgetting what they need to be doing in order to stay safe. Uh, that's the first thing. The second thing is I wanna take thirty-seven and thirty-eight, uh, I guess that's thirty-eight and thirty-nine together. Because I have been in touch with Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. Um, we are eligible and, um, I believe we're going to be able to get to be a, uh, vaccine distribution center and also a food distribution center. And I have, I have made that request and I'm waiting for, um, some co- coordination with, um, uh, Supervisor Mitchell's office and with, and with our staff in order to make that happen. And I wanted to get concurrence from the, my council, uh, my council member, uh, fellow council members tonight on that. So that's basically, I do need some concurrence that we can, if, if, if we are eligible and if they approve, that we could be a food distribution center and also a vaccine distribution center.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Reyes, uh, Councilmember Reyes.
Okay, so, um, I did read through your item, uh, item number thirty-eight. I did see the statistics that were included in our, our, um, binder that shows the number of COVID cases here in the city of Hawthorne with regards to, you know, um, well, I should say, uh, community doing their part more. Um, you know, I, I also wanna say our, our city here, our city, our city hall doing the same. It's very important. Um, but you, you just mentioned that you met with Supervisor Mitchell and that's what I was just gonna suggest, um, that, you know, we reach out to her, her, but at the same time.
I have not, I have not met with her. I've met with her. I've, I've had a conversation with her staff.
Oh, okay. Well, the reason I say this is because I've done my own distribution of food and, and et cetera. And let me tell you, it takes money. Especially when you wanna partner with the food bank and other agencies. They, they're looking for funding. They not necessarily have the money themselves to do it. Um, but there's partnerships that are built, but someone has to have the funds to do that. With regards to prioritizing, uh, it said something here about, uh, to prioritize our city uh, with regards to, um, the, the community's needs, um. But I, I just wanted to understand, how are we, where are we gonna prioritize Hawthorns for vaccine and distribution? Are we talking about the current memorial center where we currently already provide testing? And with regards to the food distribution, um, where would that be? Um, with regards to?
Well, the food distribution, um, they were looking at two dates. Uh, they were looking at February twelfth or twenty-sixth. Um, possibly those two dates. Um, we haven't had a conversation. We haven't, we haven't nailed it down yet because I haven't gotten concurrence from, from my council members that we should go forward with this. So the, uh, the, we're, if, 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 if you are in, if, if you are all in agreement that we should pursue this, then I would like to pursue it and get further details. Obviously, I'm not going to, um, commit us to spending a lot of money. Um, and, and they didn't ask for any money. So I, I'm not certain whether that, they're not, they're asking for any money. But, um, I would like to get some direction as to whether I should go forward and pursue this. That's basically why I'm here. Uh, why I brought this up tonight.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, I, I would say, you know, uh, to go ahead, uh, because probably what they're looking for is, 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 is staff. You know, like, people to help them distribute the food. Because if they have the way to bring the food, let's say to drive through.
Right, they do have a way to bring the food.
Yeah, and we can.
They need, they need space. That's what they said they needed.
Yeah, we can help them organize that because like Ms. English said, you know, some of us have, I, I have done for food distribution in twenty twenty, uh, in the city of Hawthorne. So I'm, I'm quite, uh, experienced on, on that. So I can, I can help. So, so I, I'll concord to go ahead, uh, with the food distribution. But let's, and also even the vaccine because, uh, they probably, because they, they begin, for example, Dodger Stadium. They're gonna close the testing site. It's gonna be a, a vaccine site. So, so probably could be the same thing at, over there at the Betty Ensworth, that we will close the testing site and go to a vaccine site. If, if that's what they're looking for. So I would concord about that. One thing I wanna talk about, the, the rate of infection in the city of Hawthorne. Uh, Russell would know what I'm talking about because I got a call, uh, from our Congresswoman because she got a lot of complaint that one of our business, uh, continued to be open when they're not supposed to be open. Uh, so it was, it, it was a gym. I'm not gonna mention name right now, uh, but.
Everybody knows what each one of these.
Oh, it's Pat.
So, so he could, it wa- you know, even he, he was lying, uh, to, to our police department saying that he had, uh, an exemption from the county to be open. So he was one of those people that is, is breaking the rules and, and not following the, the, the protocol from LA County. And that is where, when people continue to go to the gym and that's what infection rating, uh, you know, occur. And so, so that is, like I said, it's not just the, the citizens not following, uh, the protocol or the health orders, but some business are failing to comply with the counter of Los Angeles. So I need to know what can we do as a city? And as it like our code enforcements or the police department, what can we do if they break the law? Can we shut them down?
Okay.
I guess that's for another discussion, right?
Yeah, we, we're getting off topic, so.
Well, by that, that's the Co- COVID nineteen. Is that, that's the real discussion.
So, uh, we're gonna move, so there's, everybody's in concurrence to just go ahead and, uh, follow Councilwoman Valentine's recommendation, correct?
She makes a motion?
We're all in concurrence. We just say in concurrence. We don't have to vote on these.
Well, it's on the agenda. I'm just following the agenda.
No, I know, I know, Councilmember, but you know, we're all, you know, that's just in case we wanna take it to a vote.
Okay.
Alright, but, so you have one hundred percent support.
Thank you.
Request for letter to President Biden and Congressional Representatives for Financial Assistance for Hawthorne Residents and Businesses, Patterson?
Yeah, specifically I want that to be for businesses. I just wanna have something on, in writing, um, for myself and hopefully the, uh, the other council members wanna also be on that letter. Just, uh, saying, we, we want some monies that we can, uh, direct directly to our businesses, supporting our business community. Um, while I know that there's a lot of resources to the SBA, it'd be great if the, we can do, what we were talking about earlier today, we have more funds to do more of that and reach out directly to the business, whether it have been providing outdoor dining, um, support or, or cash directly to them for, for different, different needs. I know right now there's not outdoor dining, but when that was the case. Um, but I just wanna go on record and make that request.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I would say, you know, uh, go beyond President Biden. Uh, send letters to the, uh, our House Representative and also to the, uh, Madam Chair, uh, from San Francisco, uh, Nancy Pelosi and Schumer. Because the both of them is gonna be chairmen of the both housing and the Senate. So because they're the one who's going to have to pass the legislation to give money to the cities. So we need to start sending these letters to the House of Representative and to the, uh, US Senate for them to go back to give money to the city to, because that, that's what the Republican, you don't wanna give money to the small cities. So now they have both majority in both houses. So we need them to go back to the floor and give money to the, stay to the cities because we need money.
To the chair?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I agree. Um, I don't necessarily believe that a letter to the president is gonna help us. I think we need to start with our local leaders.
Yeah, there's always that congressional delegation as well, so.
Well, yeah, the congressional leaders would be, you know, uh, Congresswoman Waters, but also, uh, State Assembly, um, Burke and State Senator Bradford. But more importantly, I think we send a letter to appropriations. Uh, there's a committee on appropriations with the state of California. Um, we need to find who the leadership is with state, uh, those appropriations, the chair, and reach out to that individual as well. I don't know who that is. We'd have to research that to see who sits on appropriations. So that's important. But yes, I would agree, um, on a letter of, uh, of help.
Yes, I would agree as well. And I'd like to add that I'm so glad to see our council, um, active and, and involved in, 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 uh, legislative matters. Because this is important. We, we've, we've for a long time gotten the short end of the stick because Hawthorne didn't get involved in, um, in legislative matters and, and, and pushing for, uh, at, at being advocates on our own behalf. So, and other cities do it. So, um, and, and so I'm glad to see that we're doing this now.
Yep. Diane Fanstein, now the, uh,
Everybody gets.
Alex Padilla.
Yeah, right.
And now they are senators.
Alright, are we all in concurrence?
Yeah.
Alright. So we have a closed session. Can we make, uh, some nice, short little, uh, final comments before we go into closed session? Patterson, or, uh, City Clerk, Kimenez?
Alright, so we're doing our elected official reports?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so just, uh, just wanna thank everyone from watching from home and Happy New Year. Just have a few updates. First, I wanna congratulate Diana Kukalan on her promotion from interim deputy city clerk to deputy city clerk. Uh, it's a well-deserved promotion. We've been understaffed for a while and due to her work ethic, we've been able to serve our community. In December, our office co-coordinated a blanket and toy giveaway, uh, with Grupo Con decisión and Neighborhood Action Network. I'm happy to share that we were able to give toys to over a hundred families. Um, we also co-coordinated a food drive with the Hawthorne Community Fridge for the midnight mission, uh, mission. So we just wanna thank everyone who donated. Um, we're gonna hold off on our community cleanup that we plan in January just because of the surge in COVID cases. Uh, once the cases decrease, we'll, uh, hold the event again. And I wanna remind everyone that MLK Day will be on Monday, January eighteenth. Uh, please take some time to celebrate MLK Day in a way that is meaningful to you and your family. Our office will be sharing some ideas via social, our social media platforms. Um, that's all I have. Uh, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Andy Reyes English?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, let me just also mention, uh, some of the, uh, partnerships that I had and along with, uh, Mayor Protem Montero, thank you for partnering. Um, I want to thank the Northgate Market Supermarket for, uh, partnering with us in distribution of toys. We gave out roughly fourteen hundred toys and I'd like to thank, uh, Bond and the Hawthorne, um, Memorial Center for their assistance in, in making it happen. I also wanna direct our city manager to, uh, include, um, Northgate Market as a community partnership. If we could do that, uh, Russ, through, you know, inden- elation to include them, because there was some, uh, some things that we had to go through and I don't wanna have to go through that again. So we could add them as a community partnership. That would be great. Also during our Thanksgiving, um, Operation Gobble, I understand that some of our water agencies are no longer giving us turkeys. And so we, myself, uh, partnered with, um, uh, the food bank and I was able to provide, uh, roughly two hundred turkeys to the community. Um, let's see, I also want to, um, thank, um, those neighbors, individuals that have been calling me, texting me with regards to uh, rental assistance needs, with regards to business needs. Um, and I also want to, um, address a couple of things, uh, with direction to the city manager. I want to see the, the, the collaboration we have with Republic Services. What is the, the services that they're supposed to be providing us with regards to, uh, bulky item pickup, trash and debris? Uh, our city is not looking good, uh, with regards to dumping trash and debris. I wanna address that and nip that. I don't know what we need to do. Um, but I wanna make some directives and I want us to talk to a representative from Republic Services and we can have them here at our next meeting. Very important. And I need to know, um, what's our plan here in our city? What have we been doing to address the issue of dumping? Um, I also want to, I wrote it down, then I missed it. Uh, I wanna thank the applicants that applied, uh, for the appointment of, uh, City Treasurer. Thank you to all of you. Um, we appreciate the involvement you have in our community. That's very important. Um, let's see. I think, I think that for the most part is it, but I know I've forgotten some things. But yeah, for now, that's it. I might have some more later. Thank you. Oh, Happy New Year. Sorry, everyone. Happy New Year. And I hope everyone had a blessed and, uh, fruitful, uh, Christmas holiday, um, and everyone stay safe. Very important.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Oh, yeah, a few things. Uh, I'm so fortunate we had to postpone our cleanup day. Uh, was looking to partner with Republic Service, um, and, and do a whole big attack on picking up some of the waste that's out there, some of the bulky trash items and, and do some power washing and all that stuff. Unfortunately, I had to be, uh, postponed due to the, the COVID cases. And so hopefully we can figure out something, right? Because as the Councilwoman said, you know, the city's not looking as pretty as it, as it could. Um, what else, what else, what else? I wanna thank everybody who, uh, applied for appointment to City Treasurer. Um, I, um, obviously that, that was my whole position, so it was very important to me to see some community engagement. People wanted to, uh, uh, serve the city in that way and, and do a good job. And so I definitely appreciate all, all the applicants and, and appreciate the, the quality of applicants that we got and looking forward to, to those next steps. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, cannabis, you know, there, there's a definitely discussion to be made whether we should allow dispensaries or not. Uh, there's a lot of, um, other uses or licenses that we definitely, I think, should allow. Um, I know that, in some cities, they do have dispensaries compensate the city for any increased costs that goes along with policing them, uh, kinda, to kinda cut out that cost. But one of the things that, that does need to be considered, like, uh, Councilmember Montero said, you know, we probably can walk to three or four dispensaries from Hawthorne, don't have to get in a car and drive. They, they surround us. Uh, so I would imagine our police, our task with dealing with whatever issues that exist with these illegal dispensaries, uh, but we get none of the revenue. So that's definitely something worth kind of discussing. Um, wanna wish everybody a happy MLK Day, a happy new year. Challenge everybody to be safe. Um, you know, these are definitely tough times. Uh, and I just wish, uh, twenty twenty-one i- is better than twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty. Um, I wish you a good year.
Thank you. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, first I wanna say thank you, uh, to all of you. It was a, you know, very good meeting, uh, us talking about helping the small business, helping the tenants, helping the homeless. So, uh, good discussion for, for begin of twenty twenty-one. So we have to be compassionate, try to help everybody out there. Uh, I wanna shout out, say thank you to all my partners that will help me during, uh, Christmas. You know, because I was able to help two hundred families and four hundred childrens who received, you know, fifteen dollar gift card uh, to go buy their toys or clothes at Target. So thank you Chevron, thank you the Women's Club of Hawthorne and even the municipal employees, all of you guys donate money. I appreciate, uh, all of that. Uh, because without partnership, we cannot do this service. And, uh, like Ms. English said, you know, Northgate, uh, even beyond the, uh, the toys, they give twelve hundred toys, you know, they were, they gave me rice and beans. I know to give those two hundred families. So we, I would love maybe for us to, uh, one of these days to send them a certificate of appreciation, uh, because they've been a good partner for, in, in our city. Um, I wanted to mention something about, uh, you know, we're talking about, uh, the, um, the fiber network and access to the internet. But I can tell you, for example, at the Monito Garden area, you know, where the seventy-three percent of the population of Hawthorne lives in those apartment buildings, you know, where the seventy-three percent of the population of Hawthorne lives in those apartment buildings, they have very difficult time to get access to the internet. They have, you know, even the Hawthorne School District have to buy some hotspot for some of the families to get to the virtual classrooms. So I want us to look at that area, Monita Gardens area, basically is one square mile where we have all those apartment buildings. So a lot of those families, they're very low-income families, and they're having problems getting access to the internet. So we need to come up with some idea of how we can facilitate them to get to the wifi, okay? And talk about the social media. To our city manager, since you transferred all the communication to the park service, right, to Vaughn. Can you work some type of relationship between, you know, the service and the communication and, and the cable for them maybe to begin to take charge of our social media's account? Instagram, Twitter, so, so it could be a platform that is made by the city that can provide information that can reach to most of our constituents. Like Ms. Valentine was talking about, you know, telling people about COVID nineteen, you know, use masks, social distance, make sure you don't have parties, you know, don't, 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 don't get out of your, you know, social media or your household, immediate household people. Because like we said, this virus is, is real. Like, uh, two hours ago, before I came to the city, to the city hall, I got a call saying one of my neighbor, two blocks down. He died. They rushed him to the hospital yesterday. He died this morning of, of COVID. My two sisters in Arizona, right now, they, they battling COVID, they're positive. So, so it's, we're here, it's healing right at home. So we need to make sure that our people in City of Hawthorne are safe. And we cannot, you know, stop saying, practice social distance, make sure you use your mask, wash your hands, you know, for thirty seconds all the time. Because this virus is killing people. You know, the other day, we got one of the highest numbers of people die in LA County, almost eight hundred people die in one day in LA County. So, so even right now, they said with this ten thousand people have died in LA County since this pandemic started in, in March of last year. So we need to make sure that we tell people that, you know, this virus, you know, get tested. And please, please help us, cuz we, we begin to see the vaccine. But, you know, not everybody's gonna get the vaccine until maybe the beginning of the summer. The other thing that I have to, you know, keep thinking about, because homeless issue is a very complicated matter. It's not an easy solution. Cuz we know, you know, we, we contract with PAT and Interfaith and some magra center, we got Ramirez, Jesse Ramirez doing the work, we got the police department involved, we got the task force. You know, I know, you know, the police departments and, and some of the go out every morning, you know, to meet the people on the street. But sometimes, you know, some of the homeless people do not want to go to shelter. They did, some of them do not wanna go to those home keys. So we have to come up with some alternative methods, how we can help these people that are still on the street, you know, two hundred is a lot. And we know that eventually, after the moratorium is, is lift of, of, of the tenants and landlord dispute, we might have some other people that are homeless. So I'm hope people will take advantage of applying and be persistent to the tenants relief program because some of you out there need this money, it's six thousand dollars that you can pay your rent. So please, you know, be patient, apply, comply with all the city's mandate. If you have to reply three, four, five emails, please do so, okay? Because we're trying to help you. We're not trying to, to hinder you, you from not getting this money, cuz this is your money. It's a tax dollar money. It's all our money. So please get it. Again, I wanna wish everybody Happy New Year, twenty twenty-one, we hope will be better starting in March. Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Martin Luther King's Birthday, and Happy Alice Birthday tomorrow.
Yours?
My birthday tomorrow.
Oh, Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday.
Councilmember.
We're still breathing and still alive, right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So the first thing I wanna mention is that our Hawthorne Business Expo twenty twenty-one is coming up really quickly on January twenty-seventh. So you know that for the past five years, the city of Hawthorne has put on a very successful business expo, which in January twenty twenty included an exhibition of at least seventy businesses. Well, we can't do it the way we used to do it. Because of COVID nineteen, we've had to reinvent ourselves, just like we asked our businesses to do. So Hawthorne Business Expo twenty twenty-one will be a virtual town hall with two panel discussions and the theme Reinventing Your Business in Twenty Twenty-One. We're going to have a keynote address from the founder of Palo Alto Software, Tim Berry. We're going to have two panel discussions, Community and Government Resources to Help Businesses Survive COVID nineteen is going to be one of them. And then How Business Owners Reinvented Themselves After COVID Nineteen, that's our second panel. And our city manager, Eric Lee, is going to be a panelist on our first panel. January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, starting at ten AM, from ten to two, it's free to attend. But you have to log on to HawthorneBusinessExpo.com and register. So please make sure you make plans to attend. I wanna go back because I had encouraged people to enter the Christmas decorating contest, and a lot of people did. They really decorated their houses for Christmas. I wanna thank all of those who did that. There were three winners for the home decorating contest. And I'd like to ask the city manager to arrange for certificates of app, of appreciation that we can give out for the winners at the next meeting. If, if not the next meeting, then the February meeting, if, if, if at all possible. Because I want to encourage people to do that. It, it, it really livens up the city, it, it improves the mood. It was so much fun driving around Hawthorne and looking at all the homes that were decorated. And, and a lot of people participated. I also want to thank Vaughn Norris and his staff for, for organizing and facilitating that, that contest. The only other thing I wanna say is Happy Martin Luther King Junior Day, everyone, January eighteenth. Don't go to work. This is a, this is a wonderful holiday, and it's a wonderful memorial to, to a great man who, 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 who gave us wonderful moral lessons in our, in our country. So Martin Luther King Junior Day, January eighteenth. That is all I have. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I wanna welcome, wish everybody a Happy New Year out there in the community, to my colleagues, to our staff, to all our business partners, Happy New Year. It's going to be an exciting twenty twenty-one. But it, there is the somber note of people of, that are being affected by COVID. But we need to look at things in a positive manner. And as we've, I've recently been told, you know, we have to look forward, we have to minimize the amounts of times that we look back and just look forward to a good, uh, good future and be hopeful and be as positive as we can. So, I mean, for people's families that's been affected. Today, I got word that my first cousin's husband, one of my closer first cousins husband was battling COVID, and he passed away today. So, that's why my mind is a little, with them right now, my thoughts are with them right now. So, it's just like, probably right before the meeting, I found out. So, it's real, we need to be careful, we need to be as protective as possible. And one of the things I also wanna mention is that we need to eat carefully. We need to try to exercise our bodies as much as we can to strengthen our bodies as well, as, as well as being protective and being careful so that we can try to battle this thing off as much as possible. So let's be conscious of all those different things and elements, and pray for those who have passed, pray for those who are suffering right now. It's real. It's real. So for the detractors out there, you know, we just gotta get with it. You know, gotta get with the program, get this thing over. It's not the, it's a virus, but it's not like the flu. It has symptoms that are, uh, some symptoms that are more intense, symptoms that affect different parts of the body that debilitate the body, and if you're in a weak state, it'll take you over that point. And it could be very catastrophic. So let's be very conscious of that, and let's be very real. So, um, thank you, colleagues. We had a great meeting. We have a closed session, so we're gonna jump into the closed session immediately. I'm not, nobody's gonna step away. We're just gonna get started right now, okay? Okay, is there anybody who wishes to address the closed session? City clerk, anybody?
No.
Okay. All right, so we are now in closed session. We're on recess.
Thirty-three minutes.
What? Do they have to close somebody? Eric? Are we offline? Okay, now everybody just join the post session that come out on their screen. That's all we need to do. The screen stays the same.